So, thank you for coming to our Canton 101. This should help our new board members and also our directors and our managers get to meet the board. We have an agenda here and I believe Amy's coming on. We also have John LaFever on as attendee, so they can help us. Hey, good morning, Amy.
And John, Greg, would you like John promoted a panelist?
Um, I don't think he needs to be at this point, probably when we get to my.
Okay, great. We have it divided up in sections and our first section is the Charter Township of Canton. And Amy, did you have anything you wanted to say before we started regarding the format or the facilitation?
Uh, no, yeah, we'll just go in order and I'm kind of gonna flash my hand up when they have five minutes left, just so they know it's time to wrap it up because we just want to stay on our timeline. So I'll just be moderating in that way, except when I talk after Kristen Cole, so go for it.
Everyone see the five?
Do we want to go through the routine parts of the agenda, the approval and then roll call?
Oh, sure. Okay, thank you. So I called the meeting to order for our Canton 101 today on January 9th at 9:04 a.m. Mr. Seagris, can you please call roll?
All right, Bornski.
I'm here and in Canton Township.
All right. Foster.
Good morning here in Canton Township.
Ganguly.
Uh, here and in Fort Myers, Florida.
Graham Hudek.
Morning, Anne Marie here in Canton Township.
All right, the clerk Seagris is in attendance and he is in Canton as well as a majority. Slavens.
Morning and I'm here in Canton Township.
And Snidham.
Here in Canton Township.
Great, thank you. So I move to, I believe we'll adopt our agenda then. I know this is kind of a different meeting, so if we want to, do I have here movement to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you, Clerk Seagris, please take roll.
Bornski.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek, I'm sorry, Woolly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Hi, Slavens.
Hi.
Snidham.
Hi.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is discussing the Charter Township structure and information. So I believe that's you, Kristen, if you want to get started, please. Do you have a slideshow or are you speaking to the book?
I, I don't, I'm just gonna take it from the materials. I just have not had time to do it unfortunately with my briefing schedule that I had over the holidays.
No problem.
Good morning to everybody. I'm just gonna start with just a brief introduction of myself for the new members and maybe even for some of the current members who may not know my, my background. But I am a Canton Township resident. I've lived here with my family since 2003, have three kids, two in the Plymouth Canton schools and I have my youngest, my son attends Cook School in Northville. I started in government law when I was in law school. I was a law clerk for the city of Dearborn, worked with them over the course of a year. And then after I passed the bar, I took a job with the law firm that was the city attorneys for the city of Westland, worked with them for three years. And then I moved to a larger firm in Oakland County where I started to represent townships. And that was in 2001, I believe. So I've been working with townships pretty much exclusively for almost 20 years. I just had my nine-year anniversary with Canton last weekend and it's been great for me for a whole lot of reasons. You know, working this close to home is just a benefit you can't, it's hard to replicate in any other way. So I got both my law degree and an MBA from the University of Detroit Mercy. I'm admitted to practice in the state of Michigan before the federal district courts in Michigan Eastern District as well as the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals for the federal courts. My undergraduate degree is from Alma College and I've lived in Michigan almost my whole life. So very pleased to be working with Canton. We have a great staff as I'm sure most of you have found and the new folks are learning as they get acquainted. Um, so we'll just dive into my materials. Again, I apologize for not having any kind of a slideshow. I'm also very bad at making slides, so believe me, you're not missing anything. Um, so townships are not only the most common form of local government in Michigan, they're also the oldest form of government in the state of Michigan. Townships were created actually by Thomas Jefferson when he purchased the Northwest Territories. The traditional township is a six-by-six mile square, 36-square-mile piece of property. So if you look at some old historical maps of not only Michigan, but most of the northeastern United States, you'll see those six-mile-by-six-mile blocks carved out. Michigan is one of the few states anymore that still have townships. I believe Ohio has townships. Some places in New England still have townships, maybe Pennsylvania, I forget. But townships, as I said, are the most common form of local government in Michigan. There's approximately 1,200 townships. And then there are about 600 cities and villages. Excuse me. Um, did Steve have a question? I thought I saw a hand.
Nope.
And if you do have a question at any point, feel free to interrupt me.
I actually was thinking that I come from Connecticut and I don't remember townships in Connecticut, so.
Yeah, there may have been at one point, I think a lot of them have been replaced by cities. And that's, that's how many of the townships in Michigan have gone away by whole areas or portions of them becoming incorporated as cities or villages. If you look at a SEMCOG map, it's actually kind of fascinating. You can still sort of see the old township lines with, you know, the cities that have popped up over, you know, the last hundred and, I guess we're 170 years now. How those areas have been carved out. You look at a city like Westland has some very interesting shapes. You know, the city of Detroit itself obviously is sort of like this blob that's morphing out from the Detroit River. That, that kind of stuff is very interesting to me and I love to look at those maps. So a charter township is a municipal corporation and it has been the source of frustration for many folks and many municipalities that I've worked for, that the charter of a charter township is state law. So when a township decides to become a charter township, you are stuck with what the state has allowed you to create in terms of a charter. You cannot amend that charter. And the benefit of being a charter township is that you have some additional protections from being taken over by cities adjoining cities. But even that, it's not a bulletproof guarantee that that's not happened. But Canton, that's not something that Canton would ever be worried about because any cities around us are smaller and don't have the, you know, finances because they would have to take on all of our infrastructure. And as I'm sure Wendy will talk about when she gets to budgets, it's, it's not cheap to run that kind of infrastructure and provide those services to your residents. Townships are governed by a Board of Trustees and charter townships in particular are required to have seven members. So you have the full-time supervisor, the full-time treasurer, the full-time clerk, and then the four part-time trustees. Townships, as in particular, only have those powers that are specifically granted to them by law. We cannot create a new department that's not authorized. We cannot start offering services that aren't specifically authorized. Any action that the board decides to look into or wants to consider undertaking, we would have to look at the statutes and laws and the court opinions that have interpreted those laws to see if we would be allowed to do it. And if there's no specific authority to do it, Canton would not be allowed to, to undertake those. Project. The specifically, townships have the power to own and sell real property. Unfortunately, we have the power to be sued and sue other parties and retain counsel for those purposes. We have the power to enter into contracts to further the powers that we are authorized to exercise. We can incur financial obligations and pay them out of the, the taxes of the township. And we have the ability to receive and pay out money. Additionally, townships must perform the following functions, as Michael will talk about maybe and can attest to, we must conduct elections, we must assess real property, we must levy and collect taxes. We, the board has the authority to legislate by ordinance or resolution. We must comply with the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act. And we must audit and provide accounting functions, which Wendy will talk about. We have some discretionary services that we can perform, including road maintenance and repair, fire and police protection, emergency medical services, water and sewer services, sanitary sewer that is. And then of course, parks and recreation programming, planning and zoning, code enforcement, liquor license inspections, library services, and then own and operate cemeteries, which if some of the board members aren't aware, the township actually does own and operate, I think it's four cemeteries. For the clerk and the treasurer, they are required to appoint deputies. And this is because they have certain statutory duties that must be performed throughout the year. And if the elected officials are not available, they have to have someone to step into their role and perform those functions. And then the supervisor is authorized, but not required to hire a deputy supervisor. Excuse me. All right, so let's talk about the three full-time elected officials. And before we get into them, let me just say those are the three statutory offices in the township. All the other offices and departments are functions of the board. They're created by the board and then staffed in accordance with township policies. But the only three offices that are required to exist in a township are the supervisor, the clerk and the treasurer. So the supervisor is the chief elected official. They're the legal agent for the township. And under the Charter Township Act, they're the party against whom the legal process must be served. So when we get a lawsuit, technically it's the supervisor that has to be served. The supervisor is also the chief administrative officer of the township. The supervisor is the statutory assessor for the township for the assessment of real and personal property. Although it's very rare you find a township supervisor who is qualified because the state of Michigan requires assessing to be performed by an assessor that has an appropriate certification. So in Canton, as in many municipalities, the assessing functions are delegated to a certified assessor. And where Canton is authorized to appoint two assessors. We talked about the appointment of a deputy. If a deputy were to be appointed by the supervisor, they can exercise all of the functions of the township supervisor except for running meetings and voting at meetings. If a, if the supervisor is absent at a meeting, it is up to the clerk to take control of the meeting for the purpose of appointing a president pro tem. The supervisor is responsible for the budget, the preparation of the budget. In Canton, obviously we have the finance department that, you know, compiles all the numbers and puts together, but it is the supervisor's responsibility to have the final say in that budget and present it to the board. And the board, or the board must first see the budget 120 days before the end of the fiscal year and it must be adopted by December 31st preceding the next fiscal year because Canton's fiscal year is the calendar year, so it's gotta be that last day. Additional duties of the supervisor include that making certain that all laws and ordinances are enforced to manage all public improvements, public works and similar undertakings of the township, to have charge of all work that's done in the township on the public and private, or not private, public roads, lighting of straights, sidewalks, all that kind of fun stuff. And just a side note here, we'll talk a little bit later about the fact that, you know, the roads, public roads in Canton do not fall under our jurisdiction. They are, Wayne County is responsible for those, but Canton is responsible for the sidewalks that are adjacent to public roads. And it's actually a Canton Township case that established that, so we'll talk about that a little bit later. The supervisor's responsible, is responsible for the supervision of all utilities, for the preservation of property, real and personal of the township. Responsible for the efficient administration of the township and all its various departments. The supervisor is the purchasing agent. The supervisor is responsible for the purchase and sale of property. And as we talked about already briefly, the personnel director and the assessor. So let's move on to the clerk. The clerk has two main functions. They are the keeper of the records for the township and they are. Conduct elections, as we talked about. They also share certain accounting responsibilities with the treasurer. If you ever see a township check, you'll notice that they are signed both by the treasurer and the clerk. And that's just part of the system of checks and balances that the Charter Township Act provides for. Clerk must also keep minutes of the meetings and then publish those meetings and make them available in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act request. If a clerk, as the secretary of the board, is absent from a meeting, the board must appoint a replacement to fulfill those duties. With respect to elections, the clerk has the duty to report the results to the county clerk. And then we talked about maintaining records. They have to keep and file the certificates of oath of office, bonds and things like that. The clerk is required to keep in conjunction with the treasurer accounting records, maintain a record of the assets of the township, hold on to contracts, ordinance, resolutions and other minutes of other proceedings of the township. And then they also are responsible for compliance with the record retention schedule and making sure that records are only destroyed in compliance with the record retention schedule. Excuse me. Now on to the treasurer. I heard a treasurer once say that the treasurer's job is cash-in and cash-out. That's true to a certain extent. It's a very basic description of their jobs, but yes, they, they bring in money for property taxes, water bills, any payments for licenses are all taken in by the treasurer's office. And then they maintain those funds and deposit them in accordance with policies set by the township board. They, the, the banks that the monies go to are approved by the board. Any investment of those funds is pursuant to the direction of the township board. And of course, all the record keeping that's associated with the taking in of funds. Trying to be mindful of my time here. The board, so the entire board is the township. People don't necessarily always understand this, but the seven-member board is the township. When we talk about Canton Township, it is the seven elected officials. They represent the township, they speak for the township, they have the power to make all decisions on behalf of the township unless provided by statute otherwise. The township acts as a single body when speaking on behalf of the township and really nothing should happen in the township without the board's sign-off on it. And that may be enacting policies that delegate some of those powers to certain directors, departments, officials. But at the end of the day, it's the seven-member board that directs the, the township and everything that happens. In order for a board meeting, the, the board acts through their meetings and official actions, motions, resolutions, all that kind of stuff. In order to conduct a meeting, there must be at least four members present. That is the quorum. If there is not a quorum, and as long as there are at least two members, they can adjourn the meeting or just end it. They can adjourn it to a date certain, or like I said, they can just postpone it, just end the meeting and start fresh with new notices for a different day and time.
Kristen?
Yes.
If there's just four members there, do all votes have to be four-zero to pass? Or can they be a majority of the four that are there?
It depends on the issues. There's some matters that say you have to have a majority of the members appointed or elected. And sometimes the issue only requires a majority of the members present. So it would depend on the item that's being considered by the board. Since I'm kind of running out of time, I won't read all of this. Obviously, you guys can do that on your own time. But the board is required to meet at least once a month. That's a statutory requirement. As we talked about earlier, the supervisor is the moderator of the meeting. And in, in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, all members must. Vote vocally. And for any item to pass, again, you either need a majority of the members present or more majority of the members elected depending on the item. Those minutes are taken by the clerk who then publishes them and they have to be available to the public. Under the Open Meetings Act, draft minutes must be available within, I think it's eight days after the meeting is held. And then the board votes at their next regular meeting to approve those minutes and then they become the official record of the township. Salaries for not only the board members, but also the full-time electeds are determined by resolution of the board. The, the four trustees, their compensation is based on meeting attendance and they may be compensated for any, excuse me, expenses they incur on behalf of the township. The three full-time elected officials are not entitled to any additional compensation for attending meetings. That's presumed to be part of the salary that the, the board sets for themselves. I'm gonna skip the, the various department summaries since you'll be hearing in greater detail from each of the members. Just gonna talk about my office a little bit. The manager of, of legal services and contract administration position was originally created back in 2009. And there was a, an employee hired to fill that position. Originally, the purpose of that office was to manage the outside contracts for counsel. You know, most of the actual day-to-day work of the township was handled by outside law firms. When I was hired with the experience that I had at that point, I started taking on a lot of that work. The legal budget shrank considerably because a lot of those things that they were calling outside counsel to handle, I had the experience and the ability and the knowledge to, to handle. So I started taking on a lot of those duties myself. So right now, we have outside counsel for prosecution in the 35th District Court, tax tribunal counsel through the assessor's office. I have an attorney that assists with bankruptcy issues. We did have some liquor license counsel, but the state has taken away a lot of the powers of local governments to deal with liquor licenses. We don't use them anymore. And then of course, right now with the various litigation that is pending against the township, I have some attorneys that are assisting me just because I simply don't have the time. So I do manage most of those relationships with outside counsel, labor counsel being the one exception. I'm also the member rep to the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Association or Authority. And just so the board understands, Canton Township is self-insured. We do not have traditional commercial insurance. But through our plan with the MMRMA, which is not an insurance company, it's a claims provider, Canton is self-insured for the first $250,000 on every claim. So that means we keep that money on deposit with the MMRMA. And they pay, they cover those costs up to $250,000 and then insurance and reinsurance kicks in for anything above that. So it's not traditional insurance and it's, it's not truly self-insured. It's kind of a mix of both. I handle all the contracts except labor matter, labor contracts, draft and review ordinances and deal with a lot of miscellaneous questions that come. We, I've joked with some of my assistants that we're the miscellaneous departments because it seems like if somebody doesn't know what to do with a piece of mail that comes in or a question that comes in, you know, they send it to us. And if I can't answer the question, I most often know who to direct it to. So we, we, we deal with some fun issues. I don't know, I think I've got about two minutes. So just briefly on the Open Meetings Act, which I've kind of touched on, obviously the board has to act in, in an open meeting. It's, decisions and actions are by resolution and motion or ordinance. There's a very limited list of things that we can go into closed session for. In order to go into closed session, you need a roll call vote with at least two-thirds of the members voting, which I think would be five members have to vote yes to go into closed session. When you're in closed session, the clerk may take some brief minutes, but they are not incorporated into the larger minutes. Those minutes are not approved by the board and they must be retained for a year and a day and then they can be destroyed. I'm trying to think. I have some more information in my materials about why you can go into closed session, but those exceptions are narrowly scrutinized by the court. And so we have to be very careful about why we would choose. It's typically to discuss labor negotiations, litigation, certain employee actions and things like that. So I think I've got a minute left, probably not enough time for questions, but I'm always accessible on my phone, email, so the board is free to reach out to me. However, Anne Marie would like that handled. Some communities want questions to be directed through the supervisor. Some communities, you know, are welcome. The elected officials are free to contact me, but like I said, I now have 22 years of experience. There's very few issues I have not come across in my tenure. And, and a lot of times people don't understand the difference between townships and cities, but certainly that is one thing I, I have been dealing with for a very long time, so.
Thank you, Kristen. And we do have extra time and just to let you know, because some of the presentations are gonna be a little shorter. So just to let everybody know, Kristen has been working very hard. I see her in her office late at night working on some of the items that she had spoken about that we had talked about in closed session also. And I believe we had also done an open meetings study sessions. If the board is interested in that, we can do a study session just on the Open Meetings Act where Kristen can give more guidance and we can go deeper into it. But we still, does anyone have any questions for Kristen? Stephen? You're on mute. A famous quote.
Right. Um, Kristen, um, is this the traditional organizational structure for an office like yours? Are, and you are the township's attorney, right? Not the supervisors, not the boards? And can you just pontificate on that?
So part, my, my husband is bringing my son down, so part of the activity in the background. So of the 1,200 townships, 1,242, I believe it is, in the state of Michigan, there are two that have in-house counsel, Canton Township and Oshmo Township. So it's, it's definitely the exception rather than the rule. If you look at cities of comparable size, Dearborn is one. I believe my last time I checked, they had nine attorneys. City of Livonia has four or five, city of Troy has somewhere between three and five. You know, every community is different. It's based on the needs of the community. So what I do is, is probably, for a community of this size is probably a little unique. But there typically is like a head corporation counsel, you know, city attorney, township attorney. And then there's a staff or contracted counsel that are, you know, communicate through them the legal needs. And, you know, like I said, similar to the idea of the elected officials only being able to, to communicate with me through the supervisor, some townships and even cities, particularly where there's outside counsel. Some townships and even cities, particularly where there's outside counsel, prefer the communications to counsel to go through one office. Now, when you're dealing mainly with outside counsel, that's a mechanism to control the bills. You know, when when you're billing 150, 175, $200 an hour, obviously, that can add up really quick. So, I mean, I have an open door policy for the employees. I don't, I'm not aware of any director that has required to get the director's permission before any other staff come to me. So, you know, I'm happy to do whatever I can to assist the township. But I guess back to your question, yes, I represent the board. I don't represent any individual board member, elected official. Under the Charter Township Act, it's the board that has the power to hire an attorney to represent the board on Township Matters. It's kind of funny because yesterday, right, I was leaving, we had a deposition that ran until after five o'clock. And about 5:15, I was packing up and I got a phone call and I didn't recognize the name. It wasn't a township number. And there was a woman on the phone saying, are you the township attorney that does probate matters? And I said, no, you know, I'm sorry, but I represent Canton Township and only handle matters for the township. So and I've seen that in every community that I've worked for. I've gotten calls saying, well, you're the township or city attorney. I need your help. No, my representation is of the township, which, as I said earlier, is the board.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kristen? No, thank you. But if anyone wants to do further deep dives into some of the things that she's spoken about, we can look at some study sessions. And as Kristen said, she's great on answering questions, but I know she's busy on a lot of the litigation that we have right now. All right. Thank you, Kristen. Have a good morning.
Have a good day, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
I assume that in the past, I've always, if I had a question for Kristen, I would send it to her and copy the supervisor. Is that still okay with you and how in terms of?
Sure, unless you need to ask a question about me.
Oh, right.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Give her a call. All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you.
All right. Take care, everybody.
Bye, Kristen. So Amy, I don't have a list with me in terms of who does the next session. Can't touch some information?
Yeah, so me and Kristen Thomas and me present next for so we're 9:30 to 10:00. So I can get started and I'll be short and sweet so that here's Kristen Thomas.
Yes, Kristen.
She can get to the good stuff. So a lot of I've already had the pleasure of interfacing with a lot of you already. So a lot of you know what I do, but you do have in your packet Supervisor's Office responsibilities, programs and events. And everybody knows we do the board packet. We're actually currently working with IT on a new way to do it, SharePoint, to make it easier for the township to edit and flow those documents a little quicker. So in the future, it might be a little different than it is now, but our office is responsible for executing the board packet. After the sheet, the responsibility sheet, you'll see the boards and committees and commissions. That's a big one. We've had a lot of changes with that in the last four years. Stephen Summer have really helped in taking the lead and we made a new way for people to join boards and commissions and cast the net out a little wider. So we have an online application system now where people submit and that comes straight to me. And as we have openings on boards and commissions, we do interviews now. And that's something we've never really done in the past. Supervisor would just do it maybe with an employee. And now it's more by committee. And it's been fun. We've done a couple of different ones so far and or it's it's hard work and it's good work. And so we just did tax burn review this past week. And so now we have that on our website where people can submit their interest and apply for boards and commissions. You will see in the February focus, I'll be putting in calls for the Building Board of Appeals, the Historic District Commission and the Downtown Development Authority. So those are ones that are going to be happening in the first quarter of 2021. The the challenge, I would say, that comes up with that is reappointments. A lot of people do want to be reappointed. And if they've been on the board for a long time, it's the committee's hard decision to decide, you know, is it time to to place someone new on there? Or keep the person? So that's been something that we haven't really run up against. The reappointments have gone smoothly, but in the future, I expect that to be something that might come up once or twice. We are also the keeper of homeowners association contact information. The challenge with that is townships are governed by their own bylaws or not townships. Homeowners associations are governed by their own bylaws. So we get a lot of calls at the township regarding subdivisions or condos where they say, oh, our HOA board is doing this. You have to help us. They're not doing it correctly, or this is happening and that's happening. They're governed by their own bylaws. So they often too will ask to talk to Kristen Cold. And we say, you have to get your own attorney and we let them know they're governed by their own bylaws and changing those are not it's not an easy process. So we work with a lot of condo and subdivisions on a lot of issues and try to help navigate them through that. They are not obligated to give are obligated to give us their contact information. So we try really hard to cold call as much as we can and keep our spreadsheet up to date because we do have a lot of people who need that information. Not only the residents who live there, but mortgage companies, title companies. The thing with the township is they're not supposed to close on a deal until they get a letter from the HOA saying there's no liens or issues on that property. So sometimes that holds things up and that's not fun for everybody. So we work very hard to keep our contact information up to date. We also handle the meeting rooms on the lower level of the administration building. Those have been closed since last March. Hopefully, they will reopen at some point. When we are open, we are full every night with HOAs who meet and various groups. You know, I listed them, some of them there, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts. Any community or nonprofit group is allowed to use those. We do run out of our office, the Emergency Food Assistance Program. And I put on there, the distribution is out of the summit, and that's true. But we also have a second satellite location at Canton Place, which is by Mexican Fiesta on Ford Road there, right behind Mexican Fiesta. So that's a pretty big distribution point in addition to the summit. Sharonda is the one who's on site for that and it's a great program. So we get a lot of calls on our office about that one. Our office does run the senior summit, which we were not able to do this past year, obviously, because we get 400 seniors in attendance. And that's not one, that's one that would be too expansive for a virtual format. So possibly looking to outdoors this year, unless vaccinations really start ramping up and we maybe can look toward the fall. We talked about having it maybe late in the fall. So we'll keep you posted on that because that's a great event to attend if you're a board member. Our Neighborhood Know-How, that's also a program that went on hiatus with the COVID, but we are taking virtual this spring. And again, we will invite you because that's important. That's a good way to connect with residents from the subdivisions and the condo complexes. Our salute to Canton is our community award ceremony. So anybody can put in a nomination and we do a call for nominations every year. This past year, we had to deliver the awards to people's homes and with a little gift. And hopefully, this is one we could do outdoors or have a small thing outdoors if we can't end up having the dinner. But it's a wonderful ceremony. So if you know anybody who is doing big things in the community, please get their information to the supervisor's office. We work a lot with the Chamber of Commerce. And if you aren't getting their emails, you should. So let me know. I can hook you into that. And as they have ribbon cuttings, it's very, very good to have our board members there representing Canton Township and
Amy, the whole basically are, we already pay for a membership and then it covers the entire township.
Yes. So we pay dues that cover all of Canton Township. So to our board members, we always like to let you know to to hook into that as much as you can. And that connects you with what's going on in the community business-wise. And it's good to see your faces in the pictures of ribbon cuttings. They know they have the board's support and that's important. And then I listed on there some
I'm sorry, Amy, can I ask, does that mean, because I've always paid to go to their events individually?
Yeah. So those are you, those are separate. Those are usually like lunch passes. So yes, those are separate.
I'm glad to continue doing that. I just wanted, I wasn't aware of that.
No, it's a good question. Good question.
And actually, Amy, in regards to what Stephen is saying, that we actually even might even get some event tickets with our membership. So they, if they're going to go to an event, they can check.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Absolutely. Yes. Check with us first. Good point. After that, I did list some regional organizations that Anne Marie takes a part in a lot of those, but our office interfaces with them constantly. And she's getting to know them now. We're hooking her up to be a delegate for SEMCOG right now. And often will host meetings or, you know, obviously, we have dues for that, but we do a lot of interfacing with these organizations. So that's something Anne Marie is going to be working a lot on these first few months is them getting to know her, her getting to know them and making sure she gets going with those things. So that is a very quick, sorry, summary of our office. And I can turn it over to Kristen Thomas unless anybody has any questions.
Well, in terms of these organizations also, if anyone is interested in attending any of these meetings, let me know because they do have public there also. So I can forward you the link to call into, you know, if you're interested in hearing what they're about. So that's not an issue either.
I would recommend going to SEMCOG, especially for Kate and Tanya. I've been to two of their meetings with Pat in the past. And it's quite interesting. So down, I don't know how they're handling them these days, but going down to Detroit for them has always been interesting to meet other people from other communities.
Yeah, they're virtual for now, but hoping they'll get back to their general assemblies. I agree, Steve. That's a big wealth of information.
And it's good to have more ears in the room too, you know, so you know, I'm just going, I might miss something that's, you know, one of you might say, hey, why don't we do this? And so it, you know, just let me know what you want to do. Are there any questions for Amy? All right. Thanks, Kristen. Did you want to say where are you taking this from? Anything you want to add to that?
Um, no, I was just going to talk about the communications team and economic development.
Okay. So before we start there, I just want to say something really quick. Did so there are org charts in here also. If anybody, does anyone have any questions on the org charts? Just let us know also, or you can ask us later. And the senior summit, isn't this the one, Amy, we're discussing is doing virtual? So we're still not to see, which is the one we're looking at doing virtual? So we still start planning for that.
Neighborhood Know-How.
The Neighborhood Know-How. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So some of these might be hard to go virtual. But we're still looking at it. We do have an aspect where we are working with seniors separately, virtually, but it's harder with that that population group. Okay. All right. Sorry. Thank you. Go ahead, Kristen. So we're on to the next section, which is economic development and communications.
Yep. We'll start with communications. As you can see, we've got a pretty robust communications team. It started off when I, when I started with Canton in 1997. There was two communication specialists, one for municipal services, one for public safety. And it has grown from there as our needs have grown, as our community has grown. And there's been a lot of talk about why we're organized the way we are. And we've tried to do it other ways, but this just seems to work. There's one person or two people, major services case, two and a half people assigned to each department. And it works because they are immersed in that department every day. So they know what's going on. They know who to talk to for different information. So they all live in those departments. And then we come together for coordinated township-wide efforts. For instance, last COVID, we've all done our different parts for letting the community know different portions about COVID and how we're handling it. The other coordinated effort, most recent feature was the roads initiative. So we do come together when there's township-wide communications needs, but day-to-day, we're all kind of in our own separate departments. And over the years, the communication specialists have taken on additional full-time positions with the economic downturn. We were all forced to kind of merge our jobs. And so we used to have a full-time economic development manager separate from the communications person. So basically, my jobs were merged. So now I do both. The municipal services communications person is now also the DDA coordinator, which was also a full-time job. So and public safety executive assistant was a full-time job. So now it's merged with the communications person. So we've all really taken on a lot. And then leisure services has always been a it's a giant, giant undertaking. So they have more people dedicated just to communications and marketing because they have different needs. Obviously, government is not meant to create revenue, generate revenue, but leisure services has businesses. So they have different marketing needs and communications needs that need to be fulfilled. So they have more staff dedicated to communications and marketing. We have a lot of communication tools. We have the Focus Newsletter, which in every survey we do, like 95% of people say that's where they get most of their information about Canton. It is sent to every single address in Canton, not just homes. It goes to businesses. It goes to every single address, which is gosh, I think we are over 37, 38,000 addresses. And it's also posted online. We have Canton Community Television and two, two channels where you can watch all the meetings, everything. We have different shows going on. We have our website, which has different department headers. So basically, every department has its, almost every department has its own website, if you will, under the Canton-MI.org umbrella. We've got public safety, leisure services, summit, sports center, pheasant run, village theater, and Liberty Fest has its own department head, if you will, under the township website. Also, as you can see, we have a lot of social media accounts. We're going to have some discussions, fun discussions about those. Again, leisure services has a bunch. And, you know, who knows where we'll go moving forward, but we do have a lot. So we do have a lot of ways of communicating with our residents. And we also do the PowerPoint presentations, graphic design, press releases, you name it. If you need something that falls under the communications or like Kristen said, even if you're not sure, a lot of times we get the call of like, hey, can you do this for us? And most often, yes, we can. So we're here for you, whatever you need. And now economic development.
Um, Kristen, I'm sorry. Thank you for that great job. Let's just see if we have, I just want to add to what you've said because not many people know this about Kristen, but she also does in terms of if we need anything done at the cable station, she can help write scripts. She can help write anything that we need to launch off the Canton Township page. Right now, she's doing a lot with putting out COVID information. And I know we, a couple of days were actually missed because the labs were closed down. And we had residents that actually wrote in and said, I want to see these numbers, you know, for my own health. So we, this is important information as she's putting out there. Also, the HOA contacts, which Amy had kind of touched on, we do have contacts to all the homeowners associations. And we're making sure that not only do we have the correct people for that, but there are, as we know, HOAs. There are neighborhoods in our community that do not have HOA. So we're making sure that they're on those contact lists also. And we want to start blasting out information, COVID information to those HOAs. We're also planning visits to the HOAs. So any board member that wants to attend should come to that where we're going to talk about the roads with them. And, you know, just more personal contact rather than just sending information and meeting with them once a year. We're trying to schedule that we're going to go to one of their meetings each year and and meet the members and talk to them. So there's a lot going on with communications along there also. Are there any questions about communications before we go into economic development?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Oh, yeah. The public safety stuff like Nixol and those other methods they use, does that fall under the communications team or do they do that themselves over on?
So Barb Crusoe, our our public safety communications person, she and Patty Esselink, I believe between the two of them and probably also Will Hayes a little bit, do do the communicating for for public safety.
So those alternative methods that they use are more specific to their department. So it's
Yes. Yeah, I don't, I don't have access to Nixol.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
We're also looking at and communicating more as you have seen more outside to residents with PSAs and actually internally also to employees with the all-employee meetings and making sure that they're up to date, especially during these COVID times. So communication, she works on internal and external.
Oh, and also what about press releases? Is that this team that does that?
Yep. Depending on what the topic is, you know, if it's, if it's something about roads, that would be municipal services. So that'd be Amy Hamilton. If it's, you know, it's, you'll, you see a lot of If it's, you know, it's, you'll, you see a lot of Peg Stevens probably does the most because leisure services generally has the most going on. They want to let people know about their programs and events. But yes, we all, we all do them. We, we have a media contact list that we send all of our press releases to. They all get posted to the website as well.
Yeah. You're going to see a lot of press releases that'll come from the Canton Police Department, from leisure services. So the different groups right now are releasing their own press releases. We don't have it going through one central point.
Right. And again, that's because it's, you know, for instance, Barb is over in public safety all day, every day. She, she's their point of contact. She knows where to go if she needs information. She, she lives in that department. So it's, it's the most efficient way of doing it. And they, they are hearing stuff that is going on day to day. So they're the most well-versed in their own departments. So it just, but we, we do meet every other week, the, the communications team, just to kind of see what's going on, who needs what? Do we need help here? What do you have going on? Is this going to be an issue? Kind of, kind of thing. So we coordinate, but day to day, they're in their own departments, if that makes sense.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. So economic development, um, you know, it, during the economic downturn, Phil Joy decided we needed a dedicated economic development manager because the board said the only way we're going to survive this is to kind of grow our way out of it. So he wanted a dedicated position for economic development. So that was created back in 2009. And the initiatives are provide a responsive government, promote the community, establish partnerships and attract, retain and expand. So the first three of those all come together to do the fourth. So we can't do the fourth without doing the first three. So when I say provide a responsive government, it means, you know, every, every government's different. And so when you've got a developer coming in, our processes may be a little bit different than others. And so we need to be there to answer their questions, to get them through the process in a timely manner. And so a lot of times this position is like a shepherd, she's shepherded them through the process. And, and you know, they might get hung up in building or engineering. And so you kind of just like make sure that they are moving along efficiently. And a lot of times what I have to do is pull together meetings with all of the building, planning, engineering, public safety, because a project might get hung up. And when you get everybody in the room at the same time and they're hearing the same thing, oddly enough, problems seem to go away because they're here, everyone's hearing the same thing at the same time. And so they can't say, well, he said this and she said that, and I'm hearing that. Nope. We're all going to sit down. We're going to hammer it out. And nine times out of 10, that, that's all it takes is one, one meeting. So that's, that's providing responsive government. We're going to make this work. We're going to get, get you together, get your questions answered and get you through the process. Promoting the community, that's, that's how the, this pixbladed tree that you see, we thought, how can we? The answer, we don't, whatever the question is, the answer is we've got it. So when you ask businesses, what do you, what are you looking for? What do you need? What, you know, we've got it. We've got it. You know, look to Canton because we've got it. We're going to help you through. We, you need to help, you need help finding a site? We, we've got it. So we did a whole campaign on that. We, we continue with it because it's still relevant. We've got it. Canton's got it. So whatever, whatever it is you need, we've got it. Partnerships. These are huge with economic development because a lot of economic development is connecting source, resources. And so I work very closely with my counterparts at the state and the MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation. We, we visit businesses. We ask them how they're doing, what they, what they need. Do we have any programs or incentives that we can use for them? And knowing where to go, if a business has a problem or an issue, knowing what resource we can connect them with is, is huge. And so being able to pick up the phone and say, hey, can you help this business? They need ABC is invaluable to. So we have to establish and maintain these partnerships with the different agencies.
And basically just to let, expand on what she said. So the MEDC, we, they choose different businesses and then we have a meeting one-on-one with that business to see if they need help. And so we just did that recently. What was the name of the business that we worked with?
Mapco.
Mapco. Yeah. So he was, and we gave him some resources to help, you know, look at maybe finding some networks and partnerships. So that was, meetings like that are important.
And it kind of gives me a heads up, for instance, if they are looking to maybe expand or relocate, can I help them stay in Canton? Can we find them a bigger building in Canton? So I kind of get in on if, if they're looking that way. Get in their ear to say, hey, give me a call and I will help you find something, whatever it is you need.
Yeah. JCPenney's kind of took us by surprise recently. And so now Kristen is trying to get a hold of the development property management and find out if they had somebody else that they knew that were coming in, or were they kind of taken by surprise also? Yesterday I was doing my drive-arounds and Kristen called me and said that a restaurant wanted to come in. Did I see anything, any of the buildings of a certain size? I just happened to be in front of one, an empty one then, and I gave her the information. So this is what she does. She connects businesses with places to go because there are a lot of businesses that still want to come to Ford Road.
Was it a seafood restaurant?
No, it wasn't. It was a hot dog and barbecue, which there's nothing wrong with hot dog and barbecue. I do like that.
Red Lobster. Just kidding. Yes, Tanya.
So is it all types of businesses, like, you know, it's big manufacturing companies or small like stores, every type of business to help out?
Yep. Any, any type of business, the, the retention visits that we go on with Wayne County and MEDC, those are manufacturing and industrial and warehouse, not retail and commercial. But that's not to say locally that I don't, any business can contact me. And, and I'll help them through the process. It's big, small, even just not even a business yet. How do the, how do I get started with a business? A lot of times they'll call me and I again have, have these tools in my toolbox, you know, where are you in the process? Do you, do you even have a business plan? No, you don't. Oh, well, you can go to the Schoolcraft, the Small Business Development Center. They, they can help you write a business plan. And then I can help you maybe find a site or an office or whatever. So wherever you are in the process of your business, I should have the resources to help.
Thank you.
Sure. And one thing I do want to make clear is that I do not have a magic wand and I can't just, you know, I get emails saying, why can't we get a Banana Republic in Cherry Hill Village? Well, I would love that too. But the reality is it just doesn't work that way. And there are certain, you know, different businesses have different business models. You're not, you're not going to find any national retailers generally in Cherry Hill Village, only because of their business models. And in fact, it's difficult to even get franchisees into a place like Cherry Hill Village because franchise agreements a lot of times dictate where these places can be located within the community. They might tell them you have to be on Ford Road or you have to be on Michigan Avenue. I mean, I, so I can direct somebody to Cherry Hill Village and their franchise agreement just will not allow it. So that is the challenge to get people to understand that I, I do, I can't just make things happen. I like to plant seeds everywhere. I planted seeds with Costco for years. I would stalk them at the ICSC conference. I found out who, who does their site work? And I stalked this guy and I sent him stuff and.
She didn't really stalk him.
Well, I mean legally, I stalked him. I made myself a pain in his butt, but no. So when it was time for Costco to expand in Southeast Michigan, he said, oh, let me call that lady who's been bothering me. So I was, you know, I, so I did my portion of it. And then unfortunately, um, there were landowners who were not able to get out of their own way to make a deal with Costco. And so there's nothing I can, there's just, unfortunately, there's nothing I can do. If we don't own the property, I can't make these people make a deal with different businesses. So I can try, I can try to negotiate and I can try to get them together and, but at the end of the day, I can't force a private landowner to make a business with a, with a company. So that's frustrating.
No, thanks, Kristen. We've actually run out of time, but this is another good, good area where we probably should do a study session on. Deep, a deep dive with the group because we've got, yes, with the DDA, correct. We've got a lot coming down the pike, especially with the mobility corridor, the Ford Road, Ford Road expansion, which is going to change a lot of our interface with businesses there. So this is a good one. And of course Cherry Hill Village, like you said. So no, are there any questions before we move to the next item? Okay. So I think we should do a deep dive on this soon. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Kristin.
Bye. Have a good day.
You too. Bye-bye. Next on the agenda, we have Karine Connolly, which is going to talk about our human resources. Thank you. Karine, you're on mute. And did you have a presentation slideshow? I mean, or did you, are you speaking to the information? Oops. Okay. Yeah, we have, we do have, we do have it in your packet. I would just let you know, you are still on mute. Did you need to, she can't be unmuted somehow?
If I click this, does it give you a prompt that you can click? You know?
And holding the spacebar down doesn't unmute you?
Interesting.
She might have to leave and rejoin.
Wonder, what if I make you a co-host? Try to see if this.
Maybe if she leaves the meeting and comes back in, it'll allow her. Zoom is weird like that sometimes.
Just to let you guys know also, we do have a, we did give everybody times for everything, but I think in the end we will be a little bit padded. So some people might run over and that's, that's okay. We'll still work with you there. Technical difficulties in these times.
Can you eject her from the meeting and then have her come back in?
I could do that. I've never ejected a employee from a meeting before. Interesting precedent.
Do you want that, Karine, to him to kick you off so you can come back in?
Oh, she's unmuted.
Okay. I can't get the, I don't know. I don't know why I can't get the screen back to, okay, here we go. All right. Sorry about that. I had tech difficulties, but I'm back.
It's okay.
Good morning. I think my, my screen was frozen. I couldn't get the cursor to go where I need it to go. So.
Did you want to show the slides, Karine?
I am. I'm going to share the screen in just a minute and hopefully this will be without air. So I did everybody a whole lot of information, I think in the packet that we sent out. And so my presentation today, I thought, how do I supplement it with things that I'm not regurgitating what's in there? But might actually shed a little bit more light on what goes on in HR that you may or may not see. So hopefully. Do you see a shared screen? Do you see my PowerPoint? Okay. Yes.
We see it.
I don't know why I can't see my screen now. So this is not working as I had hoped.
We can see this slide that says Canton Township's employees are most valuable asset. That's what we see.
Good, but I can't get to where, hold on. This is not going well. All right. Well, if I can't show you, I can't even get to the screen. This is not going well.
We can just walk through your slides as you can call them out.
Yeah, I just, I can't get to moving the slides is my problem here. I can show you the screen. I just can't. Okay. Here we go. I think this will do it. All right. Let's see if this moves. Here we go. Do you see my org chart? All right.
We see it.
Sorry about that. I'm not going to spend time on the org chart. I provided that in the information that I previously provided to you. We do a lot of things in HR. We, as, as Kristen said so well, we've got it. And I think we do have it in Canton Township because we have so many incredible employees that make the team of people that we do. We provide so many services. And it really starts with building a team of employees to be able to provide that. And to build a team, you need the benefits. You need to be able to have something to offer them. And that's kind of what our department is geared towards is recruiting, retaining and producing a really good team. The employee count as of the eighth looks like this with 100 and 1,815 active bodies in our system. That means in the HIRS system. So even with election workers, Michael will know that we have hundreds of election workers that come up. We don't use them every day. We use them during the elections. But with every one of those that we bring on, anybody that we pay, HR has a role in that and making sure that they can get paid. They have numbers. They get into the systems. Same thing with any, anybody who's, who's receiving payment in that manner comes through HR. I'll talk a little bit more about active employees, et cetera, in just a minute. So the question on vacancies, we sometimes hear, oh, we can't recruit police and fire and we're having a difficult time. We know that the pool of candidates for police and fire are down. That's just the nature. We're not unique in that regard. Chris could tell you when he applied for the position, when he was going to be a firefighter, there were hundreds of people applying. We don't see that anymore. But as of today, this changed yesterday, we have one police vacancy. That's only because somebody who had accepted our offer had decided to stay at their, their community. We have every, we have all fire spots filled. And then we have a vacancy in IT, someone's leaving the, later this month. We have eight vacancies in MSD. Five of those are posted, one's on hold and two will be posted in the coming week. And then leisure services has four full-time positions on hold. So kind of a snapshot of where we are and where the vacancies are in the organization.
Karine, are those, so public safety, I mean, over my eight years here, it's, they've always been down. Is that some hiring that we've done recently, or is it that there are some positions that we've decided not to fill at this point in time?
No, in fact, this is, this has filled all positions that they wish to fill. So part of what we've done in Chad, we'll probably talk about it a little bit later, is they develop this PSA program. And in that it's a career development. So we're bringing people in, we're integrating them into the department on a part-time basis. You all set the wage rate for them back in December. And we started to grow our own. So we've got people that we'll send to the academy. And while they're in the academy, we actually pay them. When they come back out of the academy, they have a job with us. So they'll wear our uniform when they graduate from the academy. So instead of relying on people coming from somewhere else, we're helping them join our team by really growing them in-house. So we get a chance to determine how they're going to fit with us even before they go to the academy. So that's, that's been part, I think that's partly been successful. And I think we just diligently keep working at it. My dream was to have all vacancies filled for more than 10 hours. I think we had it once. And yesterday a police officer dropped. So, and these are people that are in, we do have some of them that are in the backgrounds right now. So when I say these positions, we have a body for every vacant position that we have. We've interviewed, we've offered jobs. And now it's the vetting them out through the background, background. So we're really proud that we've reached that point. We know that there will probably be some that will, some people that will retire. Some people may not make it through the background. But we do have active postings for both police and fire because that is something that happens on a regular basis. Hiring process, I put a lot of that in our, in the presentation or in the packet of information. I only put that because it is an extensive background. So if you hear people say, wow, it's a, it's a lot to get through us, we do, we spend a lot of time. So if you hear people say, wow, it's a, it's a lot to get through us, we do, we spend a lot of time upfront, making sure that we're gonna get people that are of really high quality and that are gonna stay in our community. So um we've seen that to be successful. Um, external recruiting resources, some people, sometimes they ask, well, where, where are you getting these people from? Uh, we use an applicant pro system, which is how we post our positions. We um use in, through it, it goes out to Indeed. It probably has over fifty different job sites. Um, so and depending on, on where it gets, what position it is, it could hit up to eighty different sites. So we retain the information through our applicant pro. People will tell us where they heard about it, how they knew about it. Um, we do reach out to people who have passed the exams with MCO and will actually drop. They can choose to be a part of our community and we will send the um emails out for police positions there too. Um, so do we really reach people? Well, in two thousand and twenty, we had fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-four people that actually looked at our job postings. Eighteen hundred and forty of them actually started the process and nine hundred and fifty-two actually completed the process. So we're reaching, I think, a fair amount of people for the positions that we've had open. Um, so I think that's a good thing.
Karine, I'm sorry, you got great information. Is it possible to get rid of that box at the bottom? It's blocking some of your data. A new location detected? If you can close that, if that's on your screen, I don't know.
What's a new locate? I don't have.
Oh, you don't? Okay, so it's somehow it's showing up or it's blocking some of the info.
A new location. I don't see that. Hold on.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead then.
Maybe I'll.
Not that big, so it's not hurting too much.
Yeah, it just was blocking the pre, the previous, but now we can see the others.
Okay, now I've lost my PowerPoint.
I'm sorry.
Okay, here we go. Um, this is external applicants, application. So I wanted to show you how many applicants we get for the positions that we've had. So for our full-time positions this year, we've had five hundred and twenty applications that have come through. Uh, seasonal, this was in two thousand and twenty. So remember, this is in the middle of a pandemic. So that last year was down a bit, but of course we didn't have the seasonal hiring as we would have um previously either. Um, full-time employees by unit, this, this is how our bargaining units are set up in our non-unions. Um, provided basically the, this is my, I'll call it my buy year. It's the one year I don't have contract negotiations. We're still in the middle of um working with fire, but I think we're close. And so this year we'll be making an effort to work through um some, some things that needed to happen with the merit employees. So we'll be concentrating on some of that this year. Um, as it is kind of a down year from the contract negotiations, but we'll pick up again next year as uh three of the contracts will expire at the end of next year. And I'll talk a little bit about that. So with uh labor relations, um we do in contract negotiations. And um I think there's been questions about how involved and where does the board get involved? And I've got a slide on that next too. But I responsible for the five labor contracts. We do have outside legal counsel um for labor, which Kristen talked about. Um, I oversee that contract primarily because most of that is working with myself or the different departments with regards to um matters related to labor. Um, we exchange proposals, we, we determine the financial and operational and administrative impacts. Um, the team usually, the team is comprised of myself, the uh finance director. We use labor council as needed. Some contracts don't require us to have the attorney at the ti- at the table. Sometimes it works better not having them there. Um, they always review the contract language, make sure that we haven't put anything into place that doesn't um, doesn't, that isn't legal. Um, and um we have incorporated the director of police or fire services, depending on where we are in negotiations. They tend to bring a, an actual operating perspective that both Wendy and I can't provide. Um, the board involvement, uh we look for upfront direction and input. And that happens, I think initially with you guys in the bu- the budgeting process as what's being put into the budget. But once we've met with the unions and have their initial proposals, it's the first time we're gonna know what they're looking for. We'll know internally from an administrative standpoint, an operation standpoint, what we're looking to accomplish. Um, and then throughout that process, providing updates and ultimately the approval by the board. And a lot of that's directed by the supervisor as far as when and what type of the communication is usually from me to the supervisor as to where we are on that. And then the supervisor would indicate how frequently we need to go to the board um for updates. Uh, sometimes there's a long lag just because we're, it's schedules and data collection and we're not really have anything more to bring to the board. Um, at that time. So it does seem like a long time in between those communications, but sometimes it's just by the nature of the, the negotiation. Um, on top of that, we do the conflict resolution. So with the, with the negotiated contracts, I, my one major responsibility is um the administration of those contracts and compliance organization-wide. You know, make sure they're consistently applied, make sure that nobody's violating the contracts. And when they do, they end up with all kinds of things. Um, we do letters of agreements, memorandums of understanding. If there are grievances, arbitrations, those are all things that I would handle as well. Um, our goal is to make employees successful. So the other things that come out of that are performance consultations, improvement plans, working with the department. Sometimes we'll do employee referrals, um training, mentorship. Um, just to make sure that the investment that we've made in them to get them here. Um, we've made it because we know that they're good quality employees and we'll do everything we can to make sure that we make them successful here. Um, wages and benefits is a big portion of what we do too. The wages are set by the collective bargaining. The one that isn't in there is the merit. You guys will um at the recommendation of the merit commission um approve merit increases on an annual basis. Um, the other time that you'll see things coming from that relate to wages is when positions may have been reclassified. Um, I actually do the factoring of positions using a factor analysis test, um which really determines how a position fits within the organization based on all of the um responsibilities and tasks within the, the um position and how it impacts. Um, and if it's a budget adjustment that someone needs or it's a headcount need, you guys will see that um in, at that time. This information is in your packet with regards to all of the benefits that we actually provide. What I thought would be important to talk about is we're self-funded. That I don't talk about anywhere. So what that means is we take on the burden of managing the claims. We don't just send an insurance premium to somebody. We actually pay every claim for every insurance. I mean, every medical expense that our employees um participate in. So there are deductibles and things like that, but um we manage that side of it. We do have a third-party administrator and we do have a stop loss. So for instance, we're responsible for first eighty-five thousand dollars. If there is something more catastrophic for that, we do have um insurance that covers of us above that. And this is what it looks like from an expense standpoint. I'm pretty sure you probably have never seen this. Um, two thousand and twenty is not reflective of twelve months because we won't have that until the end of the month of January. But really this um is show, is fairly consistent. Um, there are some spikes and it will vary based on what the health of our employees and retirees are. Um, but this certainly shows pretty level in, as far as it, um as far as health insurance is concerned. About six point five million dollars and that doesn't include post-retirement benefits. So um, just so you know, that's the, what we're looking at. Life and disability are very consistent. Um, we pay a lot of the things internally too. So our short-term disability is administered internally. We have a third-party administrator, but we pay all the claims. So retiree benefits, the only reason this is, information is also in your packet, but we have a hundred eighty-nine current retirees um under forty different contracts. So um they've retired over the years and we've, so each of those contracts may have something different as far as it relates to the number of plans we actually hold. This was on the agenda to go into place this year was to move um Medicare eligible retirees to Medicare Advantage. Greater than a hundred thousand dollars of your savings. However, it was roll, it was to roll out in July. We figured in the middle of a pandemic, probably not a great thing to do is to mess with retiree healthcare. Even though it is a benefit, we know to be successful in this, it's gonna require a lot of communication. So that's uh, we will certainly be doing that in the future. Workers' comp claims, that's the other thing that drives cost and things you may not see. This year we have thirty-nine cases. Um, that's not crazy. If you look, it's pretty consistent with some of our other years. We had a few spikes. Um, but and, and they're not always, um, some of them, these, this is an exposure here, someone. So into that year was just high because it had took out twenty people right off the bat for one instant. This is where those claims are coming from, police and fire, as you would expect. Um, they tend to be the more, the higher claims just by the nature of their jobs. Um, and where are those? What is the top cause? This is the pandemic. So this is, the majority of things are coming from the pandemic this year as it relates to workers' comp. Police and fire, um, uh, their claims go under workers' comp in the middle of a pandemic. That uh may come to an end in March. We anticipate that will be the case. Once the vaccine is out there, it then becomes a life illness. Um, so it would not be covered under workers' comp anymore. And those are regulated by the state. We don't, we don't regulate that. Um, and then the other high item is cuts and nicks and scratches, which happens in the course of um folks' jobs. Um, the merit commission, I didn't include in your packet, but that is one of my responsibilities. Um, I serve as the personnel director and secretary to the merit commission. It's a three-member board. One appointment is by the supervisor. I think there's one coming up pretty quickly here. Um, there's a, an employee selection. So the employees actually vote on um that member. And then there's a neutral member which is selected by those two. Um, the purpose of, is really for the hiring, the promotions, the reclassification and benefits of the non-union group. We have a hundred, we have seventy-nine merit employees. Um, and uh on the horizon for them, as I talked about um previously, this year's gonna be the year to focus on them. We have a benefit survey that's out. Tell us what you think, where you think there are holes. Um, we did an FLSA audit and now we just need to update some of the job descriptions. And then um the merit policy hasn't been updated in probably fifteen, maybe more years. It's been on everybody's agenda and it's never happened. So um, we'll be doing that. We were very instrumental and continue to manage the, um, we were part of the team for um the COVID as it, is it pandemic happened. Um, as we continue with the exposures, we manage that, we get um folks in for text testing, we process the workers' comp. We provide all the guidance in relationship to the CDC guidelines. We work with Chris pretty regularly on that. Um, we respond to the Myosha claims. We've had two of them filed. I'll be very ha- I'm happy to report that we have passed both of them. So we're very comfortable that the things that we've put in place to protect our employees have been um in line with what the state would have required. Um, FMLA, we also administer FMLA. It is, um, we have five people right now on FMLA, which is really low for us. So that's nice to see. And I highlight this just because in the middle of the pandemic, the FF-CRA, um, the first, the family's first coronavirus response act provided additional um time for um family medically, but expanded that for children who were out of school. So it allowed parents to be home with their kids um when the schools were closed. Um, unemployment, this is the next, um, like we, we typically will, we're self-insured for unemployment too, so we don't pay an insurance. We pay all the claims. And I think this one's important to look at. So we, you know, we do the monetary determinations. We protest the claims if they're not appropriate and then we'll dispute any of the fraudulent claims. So this doesn't look terrible even with two thousand and twenty being the case. Um, but here's what I thought was really important for people to understand. We had three hundred and forty unemployment claims this year. And while we see a lot of the legislation has come out and we really haven't seen a lot coming back to the local communities and uh the pandemic, in some of the pandemic packages, what we did see is in this case, we would have normally paid four hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars for unemployment. The township only had to pay six hu- six thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars. So the state and federal governments picked up four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of unemployment this year. So um, I think that's a big win for the community, big win for uh, we put the employees on work share. Um, two hundred and three employees were on a work share program. They were made whole um through August. Um, and so even, and that, this doesn't include the savings that would have come from that process while people were working a modified schedule. So I think um those are things that you probably wouldn't have otherwise seen. And um the other things we do are just providing professional service, you know, professional development. Um, I know there are some things on the horizon that the supervisor is excited for us to get implemented in the organization. And um we look forward to working on some of those new initiatives. And I think I left a few minutes for questions.
Thank you. Let me pull everybody up here. So yes, as Kar- um Karine said, we worked really hard during two thousand and twenty. As the board knows, the, the previous board members were a part of voting on some of those initiatives. And I know Kate and Tanya might have some questions. But are there any questions right now? Summer?
I have a question. Um, so I'm looking um at the um the documents that Karine put in the, the booklet. Um, and I'm looking at the compliance sheet and it doesn't have that we're in compliance with our own equal rights ordinance, um which provides greater protections than ALTRA.
So on the compliance one, I just listed things that I didn't know that everybody would, like these are, it's not that we're out of compliance. We have to be in compliance with those laws that I didn't think people would necessarily know. Um, but I, we are not out of compliance with any.
Yeah, okay.
So I just wanted people to be aware that in operation, we're go- like some operations are governed by maybe an ordinance or by one regulation or by a couple of things. Like we have to adhere to all of those types of things as we deliver that service to um ensure that we protect the employees and everything from privacy to disabilities to all of those types of things. But um there's a lot of those things that we that we operate with in, in our department. So but thank you, Summer. You're right.
Kate?
Um, yeah, so the um PowerPoint is really informative and um like Anne Marie was saying, there was, there for our screens, we, there was a little box that covered some of the information. So I'm wondering if it's possible for us to get um the, the PowerPoint sent to us.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Stephen?
Thanks, Karine. Um, and your charts were very beautiful, by the way. Package. Um, uh, I might want to steal it to use it in my own work. Um, that pie chart was really nice. Um, so uh, I think uh Summer had more specific, has more specific knowledge on this. And you mentioned it on your last chart, but in terms of diversity in our workforce, um, to what we can do legally, are we looking at ensuring that we have um a, a good um diverse workforce that reflects our community?
We, we are actively working towards that. It's a slow process. So depending on the positions, depending on where the organization is, uh, depending on really what position are open and what that diversity is. Um, I think we reach a lot of different areas. Um, and we are very conscious of uh hiring to try and reflect our organization. At the same time, hiring the best qualified candidates, right? It's a package deal. Um, and I think we've seen some diversity in the last several years, nowhere near where we would want to see it, but we are not out of the norm. I think that's really um, it's, I don't know if it's just government jobs or not, the, you know, is public service where people want to spend their time? I don't know. Um, police and fire, we struggle with, but every community I work with, I, I work on a, uh, with a group of HR folks and we all struggle with that very same thing. Um, I know Anne Marie and I are, uh, and Chad are a part of a um, a group this week with um, we did some lis- we started listening tours. This is a little bit separate, but in response to some of the things that had happened earlier in the summer, the CWW, which is an organization that we belong to in many capacities, are doing these listening tours. And it really is about uh police relations and things like that. And this uh next one, they've invited HR folks to the table to really understand. So we may gain information. It's working with the NAACP. I've had conversations with them as well and how we might better expand that, that will, that may potentially help us. And um we have tried uh to make sure that we, maybe we send them out to organizations within our community because we figure that's reflective of our community, right? Um, so you'll see that on that list that I showed in there, kind of where most of our um people are coming from. A lot are from Indeed, but that's the regu- that's where most people are gonna go and look for jobs. But you will see that it's word of mouth. It's the, the one thing that's pretty high in there are um employee references. So it's a, somebody who knows somebody which says two things. If you're an employee and you're recommending that someone work here, the employee thinks it's a good place to work too. So we keep that in mind. We do. We um, and part of our PSA program was to try and help that as well. So maybe somebody who hadn't gone to the academy for police or fire, um, maybe you just um was interested, but maybe didn't have the money or whatever. There's a way for them to get a job, experience it and then potentially um, you know, go to the academy with us paying for it. So we're trying you know, go to the academy with us paying for it. So we're trying a number of different things. Um, I can't, I, I would be lying if I said it's where we want it to be because it is, it's a slow process. Um, and I think over time, uh, we're making the efforts, but, um, I think it take time.
Yeah. I had just two more quick things. One is, um, in terms of negotiations, um, it was really helpful this last cycle. I think it was two thousand and nineteen to just hear your, the negotiation team's thoughts going into the negotiations, just to understand what approach you guys are going to take. So I, I would look forward to doing that again. And also any thoughts we had would be helpful for, I think, the team to hear as well. Um, so doing that again would be great. Um, and then the, the last question I had is, um, we had some issues in the last year or two with, um, uh, predating all of us here, um, with clarity of agreements in terms of people going from union to non-union jobs in terms of taking on directorships and stuff. And, and if we continue to do that in the future, are, have you worked that out? Or are you planning to work out that we make sure that those agreements are more clear? And, uh, Kate, there won't be confusion and, um, issues with those.
Yeah, I, I inherited that. So that's the first step. Um, so my, the agreements that have been entered into are very, um, they're almost overly detailed. Um, so I think that, that, that we certainly have kept in mind as we have, um, entered into those agreements with the, um, folks that have followed. So I think that, that issue has, um, definitely been a focus for us not to see, um, those types of things repeated. So definitely, and I do appreciate your comments on negotiations. It's important for us to know what the board is, um, would like to see. My whole goal at the end of it is no surprises, right? I don't want to, to walk back in and present that, something you say, oh, no, 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 no. And I don't want you to be surprised when we come back in and say, well, this is the direction that they're going. So at the end of the day, um, really that is the, the goal is to make sure that people are informed. We have the input that we need to be able to do the job on your behalf. And at the end of the day, we walk away hopefully with a contract that, um, people are, um, happy with, right? It's a negotiation. You always say that nobody walks away a hundred percent happy with what they, but, um, I think this one with the fire, I thought we felt pretty good. I mean, everybody walking away from the table felt good. I think it's an education process right now. So.
Okay, thanks.
I know, sorry, but go ahead.
Yeah, so I see that you do a different type of training and I was wondering, like, uh, do some sort of a diversity instruction training, you know, because a lot of them, you are trying to bring in more diversity in the workforce and also, um, based on a lot of staff that works with township, which is a very diverse township. Um, have you been doing those or is there plans of incorporating more training along?
Yes, um, that is, um, a passion of Anne Marie's. We've talked about it. We've talked about potentially using, um, the Michigan Roundtable. We're going to have some further discussions on that, but, um, we, I think there's some great resources out there. The challenge and right now is the effectiveness Zoom versus, you know, in person. Um, and how do we make that the most, um, effective? And I think that's something that we have to really think through and then the rollout to, um, the organization and how we're going to do that. But I know that is on the top of Anne Marie's list, um, on the top of my training list, along with the ethics, which I think Michael is working on, um, that we'll roll those out, um, this year. And I, I think the program is pretty extensive, so it may take more than just this year. But, um, I think we get that, that ball rolling and certainly invest in that, which I'm excited to do. So.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Corinne. Good, good job.
Thank you. Sorry for my technical issues.
No, we're all struggling with this sometimes. All right. Thank you. Um, next on our list is Municipal Services Jade. I believe he's in. Jade, did you need any of the attendees to be promoted? I see some of them are from your team.
Um, I don't think I do right now unless you want to, to meet them. But, um, if we need them to do a presentation, we can always promote them at that point.
Okay. I, I don't know if everyone also noted, just a quick thing is that Corinne had, uh, pictures of some of her employees. And that'd be something fun to do next time, you know, for our, for our books. Okay. All right. Go ahead, Jade. Uh, did you have a presentation or were you going to speak?
If you ha- if you all have copies of what I submitted, um, it's pretty lengthy, but I'm only going to be going through the first, uh, section of that as an overview. And the rest of it was for, um, added information, but I'm obviously more than happy to answer questions on any of it. Um, so just walk through the, what was submitted if that's okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I guess just to give a little background on myself, because I know I have not had the, um, opportunity to meet in person with, uh, Tanya or Kate and everybody else I believe was here during the process of which I was hired. Um, I think I'm the newest person, um, in the director role. Was hired in July of two thousand and nineteen, um, came to the Canton Township with about thirteen years, uh, municipal management, uh, both as a chief of staff of operations for a, a large municipality and a city manager. So seven months into that is COVID. Um, so it's been quite a whirlwind for the last year and a half. So I'm still learning too, but I will do everything I can to answer any questions that you have. And, um, I think you, hopefully you'll be impressed with what Municipal Services has to offer. So the first page of the, um, the slides that you have, Municipal Services, it does play a key role in shaping the development and the future of the community. Um, we are, we provide development planning, building and infrastructure services and responsible for coordinating those activities to provide the best possible service. The departments that make up municipal defa- I'm sorry, the divisions that make up the Municipal Services Department are Communications, Building and Inspection Services, Planning Services, Engineering and Public Works. Um, and then all divisions really have to work together in order to, to function. Uh, the first, uh, one I'll talk about is the Communications, and I know that Kristen Thomas spoke on this earlier. Uh, we do share a, I have, um, a communications, um, staff person who has shared with, uh, the DDA. And they do a lot of our communication via our, through the focus and pamphlets and flyers, the website. Um, they also manage the Can MSD Facebook page. And they will be leading the charge on our recycling education campaign that I'll be going over. It's in your packet, but I'm going to go over that in a little bit in more detail. And they also, we're developing some PSAs for cable, um, that will show on the, the cable channel and on our YouTube channel as well. Uh, the next division within Municipal Services is the Building and Inspection Services Division. This is probably the most customer-facing division that we have in regards to traffic. Um, you can obviously see how busy the township is and look at all of the growth and development that's occurring, um, throughout the township. But they also deal with the existing homes. So existing homeowners that are doing things to their properties. Um, and businesses themselves that are, that are rehabbing their properties. In two thousand and nineteen, uh, they had over twelve thousand permits that they issued. And that actually broke the all-time record for the township and was number two in the region for permits issued. Um, and that data was, uh, given to us by SNCOG. And then two thousand and twenty, uh, they did just over ten thousand, five hundred. And that was with the loss of two months worth of any sort of face-to-face interaction with the public and dealing with the pandemic. So we are very confident that we would have hit that number again this year and probably surpassed the twelve thousand permit number. One of the key components of that department, other than dealing with the, the permits, is actually they do also perform all of the plan reviews for proposed buildings that come into the township. Whether that is residential or whether that's commercial. Uh, we have one dedicated employee to review all of those plans, um, for the entire township. And she also helps oversee the clerical staff within that building, uh, department. So to say that, um, she has no downtime and I, we had, uh, talked previously about doing some electronic plan review, uh, some tech, not bringing in some technology that's going to assist all the divisions. And that's absolutely going to help, uh, that plan review employee, um, very specifically. And I'm not going to go through all of the duties because I do want to be cognizant of our time. But if there's any questions on any of these that I don't touch on, I'm just trying to pick out the, the highlighted ones, please stop me and I will go back and answer those questions. The next division, which is probably the first stop that any development would have when they come into Canton Township, is the Planning Services Division. And they really work at blending the community's goals with the various zoning standards to make sure that we're in compliance. And also work hand-in-hand with Kristen Thomas to, to facilitate, uh, conversations with these new developments and walk them through a process. Um, a lot of times, planning works very closely with the clerk's office too because of some zoning and ordinance requirements from some businesses that come into the clerk's office. They, um, they do provide an annual report, which is required by the state of Michigan, um, that is in the process of being put together. So you'll see a more detailed annual report from Planning Division, probably the first week of February. Um, Planning Division also has gone through a major, um, they have a relatively new staff and have a few more changes coming in the recent, uh, upcoming due to some recent retirements. And we had the, uh, Township Planner actually vacate the position last year, so we have a new planner. So we are going through some staffing changes in there, but I think that you're going to see some great things come out of the Planning Division. Um, very, very forward-thinking, very, very, uh, I don't want to go paperless. So you're going to see some great things happen, um, in the Planning Division and, uh, I'm very happy to support that. Next on the list is the Engineering Division. Um, engineering, I guess if you really wanted to, to sum them up, they deal with everything from the ground underneath. Um, so when you're talking about utilities and drainage and infrastructure, um, roads, the floodplains, wetlands, and then they work with outside agencies like Eagle and MDOT in the, in the county. Um, so the, in probably the biggest thing that they do, they also review all of the private developments as well. So every, all of these divisions have a piece in this review process whenever new developments come in. So it, there's kind of this, as the township continues to grow, this review process is, um, very important for our, for these divisions to maintain the highest quality, uh, standard of reviews to make sure that we're proud of the township that we have um, as the developments get, get, uh, built. The, uh, we have been talking a lot within the Engineering Division about the sidewalk program. And I know Kristen Kolb talked about this earlier and she briefly touched on it and I have a whole dedicated page about that too. But the sidewalk program truly is, repairing sidewalks is the responsibility of a homeowner, but it is the liability of the township. And if there's a trip and fall, we're on the hook for that if we knew about that. So we are looking at how to, um, number one, implement a gap program to fill in some, some gaps that we, that there should be sidewalks, that there are not sidewalks currently. And then also how do we reallocate, um, some assets towards the, the, the existing sidewalk program to get us back on track? Because we're a little bit behind in our cycle. And I'll go through that, um, in a few, uh, slides. But probably the most important thing, and I have a slide on this later too, is the road improvement program, which, um, everybody on here, with the exception of Tanya and Kate, were on the board when the millage passed. So we are in our, we are going into our third year of that millage program. And I'll go through, we're going to have a study session in a few weeks on that as well to talk about what's coming up in two thousand and twenty-one and give an update on to where that's at. But that is a, that takes an enormous amount of time from the Engineering Division, uh, to manage that program as well. And then on to Public Works. Public Works, um, they really keep, they, they keep the township running from a utility perspective. And anything that, you know, the nuts and bolts of the city, if you want to call it that, this is what the Public Works Division does. It's made up of six sections. It's the water, sanitary sewer, they have an environmental customer services, uh, division, asset management and then fleet. Um, Public Works is actually housed, uh, on Sheldon Road, south of Michigan Avenue. And we will be setting up a tour for the, for the board. Um, you know, today's a beautiful day, but, um, we'll probably wait till after the, the weather breaks and do it in the spring because a lot of it is outdoors. Um, we've got some, some muddy areas that we would want to take you back to that we just want to make sure we can get to. But it's, uh, it's a very complex, um, division that has lots of complexities to it within what they perform. And, um, right now, one of the big things that I'm working on with Brad Lear from the Public, he manages the Public Works Division is we are exploring a regional water authority with Northville Township, the city of Livonia and the city of Westland. The board approved an agreement to go through a discovery process. And we're in the middle of that. And something that's come out of that is that we need to actually do a study of our own system. So on Tuesday, you'll see an agenda item on the board packet to enter into agreement with OHM to do a study on our, our own water system. Because just a few years ago, the township put in a two and a half million dollar tank to help save the residents, um, money in regards to their water bills and how we could actually manage our water usage better. So we have just completed two full years of having that up and running. So it's actually makes sense whether we were exploring the authority or not to still do this study to say, okay, this is how much money was spent and this is, this was, this is now an asset of, an asset to the township and how are we actually benefiting from it? So, um, I can talk more about that on Tuesday as well at the meeting, but that is coming, uh, before the board. And then actually a big, I know this is a, a, a big item with the supervisor and we are setting the tone to start looking at our fleet, um, to make sure that we are doing what we can for, um, electronic, being prepared for alternative fuel and electronic vehicles moving forward. And, uh, so I've been in contact with Fleet and, uh, the Public Works Manager to make sure that we are getting a list and actually preparing for that. It doesn't make a lot of sense to take a brand-new existing vehicle that we just bought a couple of years ago and just flip it over just to, um, make it electric. But as we start to, to turn our fleet over, um, what is the next course of action to take? Um, actually, I left off a whole department on here. Um, the other division is actually the Administration Division, which is my own. So we sit on the second floor of, uh, Township Hall and there's myself, administrative of operations. And then, like I said, we have a part-time, uh, we share, it's a full-time staff member, but we share them with the DDA there. They, they sit on the second floor, but that is the Communications and then there is a clerical. And so I, as it states on the first page, I direct all of those divisions. And we work as a team to make sure that we accomplish the goals of the township in the direction of the board. The, the next page are just some special events that we do that I thought would be important to, to you as elected officials. Um, there is a River Day. This is a cleanup, um, where we get volunteers from out the community to participate in this event. And it improves the, the, uh, the water quality and the creeks and streams that surround, um, that are within the township. And that happens, I believe, every year in June. It did not happen last year, um, but we plan to bring that back this year. Um, household hazardous waste roundup, we do those, um, the first Saturday in September after Labor Day, although we are looking at changing that date, uh, because we were unable to do it last year. So, um, we're looking at changing that to accommodate, um, for the, for the delay. Can cleanup, this is, also has to do with, um, recycling. And this happens on selected Saturdays from eight to four out at the GFL location. A resident can actually drop off, um, these, those items that are listed here that I, I'm not going to read through them. But you can see that there are opportunities to drop this type of material off actually right there at the GFL site. And those, um, start in April. We're actually going to start that in, I believe, um, March. And we're going to actually take off the October date because of us missing the September, uh, because of what happened last year, because they did cancel these, um, all of the, uh, the, the last probably four. Uh, we're, actually maybe all of them were canceled last year. I have to go back and look.
And we're, we're also looking at the, Jade took me on a tour of the DPW, which any of these groups and any of those buil- these buildings, you can do tours of them. So we can do a board tour if anyone wants to do it individually, that's possible. But we're looking at even doing the hazardous waste roundup, you know, increasing some of those days because we didn't have that during COVID either.
Correct, yep. And then the other thing that we are going to implement and we're working through some of these details is looking at a permanent drop-off right at the DPW building. So if you have some very, this isn't going to be for everything, it'll be for very common, um, liquids that need to be disposed of. And so we're working with GFL now to set up this, um, this drop-off site and then how we will actually get that removed. So we're working through the logistics right now, but we hope to have that, that kicked off here sooner than later. The next big one I wanted to touch on, and I, there's a lot of information on the next sheet. I'm just going to kind of really give a high-level statement on this is that the road jurisdictions within the township. And I think Kristen Kolb touched on this earlier too, when I was listening in, is that we do not, um, excuse me. We are not responsible for the roads in, in Canton Township. These fall under the jurisdiction of the county. Um, that is the way that townships are set up. Is it the perfect situation? That's debatable. But nine percent of the roads are owned by the state in Canton, sixty-eight percent are owned by the county. And the remaining twenty-three percent are actually owned by private homeowner associations. So, and then obviously we're, we're in charge of what surrounds our buildings. So when you're looking at Civic Center Drive and Veterans Way, those are all ours. Um, and we, we maintain those. Um, there is a whole funding mechanism that goes into how you fund roads that is probably worth, I mean, that, that's a long conversation to have. Um, but we do work very closely with the county on road repairs and road issues and then coordinating our road projects so that we don't. So that we don't get in each other's way. Because I believe that the next page was the actual Canton Road Improvement Program, which kind of ties right into our road millage. That generates about five and a half million dollars a year at the current tax base. It's a one point four or five mil that's was approved in two thousand and eighteen for twenty years. It was approved by the, by the residents. And this is, we just completed the second full year of projects in two thousand and twenty on that. And of course, with it being COVID and, and our projects were delayed, our major road projects were delayed, but we do have an aggressive plan for two thousand and twenty-one and beyond to make up for that. We are working and you, the way that the initial program was set up was to allocate fifty-five percent of those funds to major road projects. And thirty percent to local road projects, which actually is where we work with the subdivisions and they actually have some contributions that they, they contribute to the project itself. And we work with them on what's best for their subdivisions and we allocate some funds there. And then fifteen percent goes to the state and it's, the why it goes to the state is really for the Ford Road Project. We are committing ten million dollars to the Ford Road Project. And so every year there's roughly a million dollars that goes to the state to, for the completion of that. What I have listed here on the sheet actually shows you the major road projects that were funded from two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty.
And we are having a study session on this in a couple of weeks, so we can do a deeper dive in the roads task forces meeting. Go ahead, Summer.
No, I just wanted to add because I don't know if Kate and Tanya are aware that, so the private roads that we have in Canton, those residents are not allowed to take advantage of the local roads portion of the millage and some residents don't love that, but but yeah, just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Thank you, Kate.
Yeah, I, I didn't know that because I'm in one of those areas that's affected by that, which actually, um, I, I wanted to ask Jade on the section about road jurisdiction and, and funding, um, you talk about private roads found in apartment condominium and site condominium developments, which are maintained by homeowner associations. Um, and then the next sentence is all subdivision streets are maintained by Wayne County. But I think that just for clarification, if there's any residents watching, some of what we consider as laypeople to be subdivisions are actually site condominium developments. For example, my, my subdivision, I call it a subdivision, it's Pheasant View at Pheasant Run, but we are a site condominium development. And so we have private roads.
Yeah. And definitely we'll, we'll have a lot of probably residents that questions at this, um, this session that we're going to have in a couple of weeks.
I have a quick thing, not about the roads, but the section before that to talk about the recycling and all the special items they is there any plan unlike, you know, the, just like Ann Arbor has, um, there's some, there, they have some special days to pick up things like styrofoam and other things that, uh, you know, that we cannot recycle here. And, and we just take it to different parts and if we go to Ann Arbor, they charge us if we are non-residents. So is there some, like you connect, like is there a plan to expand on those type of items?
We have discussed it in the past. There's been no real, um, real effort made to styrofoam specifically is very complex and to deal with. And so you're talking specifically about curbside pickup of styrofoam or you're talking about drop off locations?
Because off location because
Yeah. Right. Yes. So I think as we start to move forward with this drop off location out of DPW, we have to be cognizant of number one, our, our space. But number two, we can also look at what can we do to accommodate and make this make the drop off location maybe even bigger. So maybe styrofoam is one of the big, the big focuses that we have that when we, as we move forward, that's what, where we, we have some sort of drop off. And then we'd have to work with some sort of contractor to remove that because then we have to find a place for it to go. And then, you know, the staffing of that and what does that look like? So Anne Marie and myself and Brad, we had quite a long conversation about recycling. So I think we'll see some, some big changes in recycling moving forward and some, probably some more strategic sessions in regards to how we can accommodate a bigger recycling program, if that's the wish of the board.
Right. We've also heard a lot about composting. We know that's and, and I know the board's real passionate about this one. So I think it's probably, we'll be seeing an environmental committee or something like that going forward soon also.
Absolutely.
Michael?
I was just going to, you know, when we were talking about roads, you know, I'll do my, my kind of nerdy historical thing. What's interesting is when you talk about jurisdiction of roads is in the early eighteen hundreds, the title of supervisor. The, why are townships, like why is it the CEO of a township supervisor? They were the road supervisor initially because townships had a hundred percent jurisdiction over their roads. And that was extremely inefficient. And what they found was that these fairly rural, six mile, six mile municipalities couldn't really like maintain and build and manage these roads. But, um, and if they were building a road in front of your home, you had to either donate labor or capital. You would have to like leave your farm and actually build the road with the supervisor of the township. But then as that was inefficient, in the eighteen eighties, uh, the state legislature gave jurisdiction of roads to counties because it was seen as inefficient. Which is actually ironic if you go to like, let's say the Canton discussion page currently, you will hear how inefficient the county is at maintaining our local roads. So that, that issue has done a complete three sixty in the entire history of Michigan, going back to even before we were a state when we were a territory.
Yeah.
Little caveat, I was thinking of that while listening to that presentation of the paradox of the local road jurisdiction.
Yeah, very interesting.
And that'll be something we should talk about during, and also PA fifty-one. And actually the next page, I know he's going to, the Ford Road Boulevard project that can be part of our roads.
I'm, yeah, I'll skip over that. This was just kind of a high level overview. I'll skip over that and go over that with the road.
I just had a quick question on that. Just, um, you mentioned the state money, um, the million dollars or whatever a year. Are we actually sending that to the state now already? Or we are, so they're already using it for costs associated with planning Ford Road? Is that what it's for?
There was, um, I'm going to have to pull the specific paperwork on that, but there was specific, um, specific items they could use that money for, and most of it was for right of way acquisition. There was for the design. So they are utilizing some of it, but most of it is actually for the right away acquisition when they go out and start that process.
So they're holding on to it in order, hopefully in order to pay out those monies for right of way and
Yes. Yep.
All right.
The next one, which I think is a, is a going to be a big topic moving forward too, is the Canton Sidewalk Program. And I know we're running out of time. This is a brief overview of where it started. And I guess my, my biggest comments, because I, I'm going to be requesting us a, um, a study session on this as well in the next couple of months. As Canton Township has grown from, I believe it was forty thousand people to a hundred thousand people just in thirty-five years. The, the sidewalk program that we have in place used to be on a ten-year cycle where we got to every sidewalk every ten years. That's now gone to twelve years because of it, it, I don't think it's anybody's fault, but I think that through the recession and other decisions that were made years and years ago with funding and then also just the growth of the community, we need to get a, we need to kind of relook at this and say, can we allocate some more dollars to this? Because right now the whole onus on replacing these sidewalks is on the residents itself. So I'm working with our team to say, is there some, something that we can do to actually make this kind of a private partnership with our residents and actually conquer more sidewalk issues? Because if we know of an issue and it's reported and we are getting the reports that we get in from the town, from the residents come into engineering and we get those reports. If we know about it, we have an obligation to fix it. If we know about it and we have an injury and someone slips and falls, that, that liability is completely on the township. So we, we have an obligation, we, we, and I think Kristen touched on this earlier and I don't have the specifics of the lawsuit, but Canton was the lawsuit in the state of Michigan that actually set the new where this decision was made. So all cities, townships and municipalities fall under the same, the, the same thing. So we have this program, but I think it's time to relook at it. And I would be requesting probably some more funding for this to see what we can do to be a little more proactive. But I, I'm working with the engineering team now at this point, and then also to fill some of the gaps. And we've been talking about that for, for quite a few months now about filling some gaps that need to be filled throughout the township. The Canton Recycling Grant, this is a recycling education grant that we were awarded. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of update on this. It was supposed to happen last year with COVID. They postponed it. So now we're going to be doing it this year. It's going to be an informational and try and get people that are recycling to not contaminate their recycling bins. It's amazing. Some of the things that you would see in these recycling bins. And we will also set up another tour of the recycling center where you can actually see where recycling goes in. That one we will schedule before it gets warm up because you don't want to go to the land, you don't want to go to the recycling center when it's in the middle of June or July. So we will get that scheduled. We'll get you out there and we can do a tour of what that looks like too. And they can show you some examples. So I'm looking forward to that. And Amy Hamilton and Bradley are, are leading the charge on this grant and there'll be more to come on that. It's supposed to kick off in May.
And when we get past COVID, of course, taking a, another ride up the hill, some of our, our landfills, including the one on Westland, because they do have an education center on top of that, which would be good for us to see.
Yes. And then I just included, um, a page on the accreditation. I came into this after we were accredited, but I can tell you that the department and all the divisions are very proud of this accreditation. We're only one of a hundred and thirty-two municipalities across the country that are actually accredited for our Public Works Division. And that covers twenty, forty chapters of different topics that we, that we had to be certified in. And then the very last page that I sent you, that I gave you that I'm going to go over is just our org chart. You can see where we've got our, our managers and division leads and myself. And then I believe we've got just about seventy-five employees that work within the MSD Department. And then the only other two, the other things that are in, just in there for reference, it's our annual report that we put together every year, not the planning one. This is just the MSD one. And then I did do a COVID nineteen impact report. I think it was back in September. Just because we were constantly monitoring where we were at. So I put that in there for your information as well.
Are there questions for Jade? I mean, there's a lot of information. He does oversee a lot of different department areas.
Um, I, I know we're short on time and we can do this in a planning session. Anne Marie, this is a big one for you is charging stations throughout our community. I know other communities I've seen started putting these in and I don't know if they're private or, or public or a combination joint effort. Some public parking lots seem to have them and things like that. And you mentioned the vehicles that you're looking at or do we have thoughts on that?
Yeah. So one of the things that we've been talking about at our Tuesday meetings with the three full-time electives is the, the parking lot project in the back of, um, of the administration building. And we have a, a sketch to show you guys on Tuesday. So I'm kind of letting the cat out of the bag a little early. But one of the things we did do in that was actually designate some space, some electronic, electric vehicle charging stations that would be utilized by both, it could be utilized by staff or by the public. And then I know Greg Hoenberger is on the call as well, but him and I have met previously with DTE in regards to some grants and things that are out there to, to put more of these in. So I think that with the new direction and some new focus on this, yes, we can identify some places throughout the township that we can put those in. Yeah, pretty low, at a pretty low cost too, because I believe that DTE's refund is pretty, pretty nice on that.
And in speaking also to MDOT, they're aware of our interest in making sure that we have technology in, on Long Michigan Avenue and Ford Road also. So, and they're very excited about that too. That's one of their priorities. Kate?
To Stephen's point, there are also companies that are developing networks of charging stations across the country. And I, I actually have an electric car, so I subscribe to some of these companies because I, in case I need to drive my car a long distance, I need to know where the charging stations are. But if you need information about any of those, I'm happy to.
That would be fantastic. I'll, I'll send you an email because I think those, any of those resources are helpful.
Definitely on top of what Kate said, they're looking, I mean, along two seventy-five and ninety-four is going to be a major area where they're putting them at rest areas. But the state of Michigan also has a group that we can work with and make sure that they, they can help us. And we're also going to, you know, our fire station, which is going to be opening very soon, which we'll take a tour. We made sure that the conduit was ready to put in electric, you know, for any of our future fleet that's electric also. Tanya?
Yeah. So last year, I think it was in twenty nineteen that our Congresswoman had a smart conference, smart mobility conference. Our conversation where she had invited a multiple people and I had spoken to a person from Bosch who's very interested, like, you know, companies like that, that really helped with the smart mobility corridor. And I'm sure Anne Marie, you were also there for that conference. Maybe we can work with those companies to
Thank you.
Public part, um, public private partnerships.
Definitely partnerships are really going to help us through this. Definitely. Thank you. Anyone else? So just to let you guys know, this is a time where we usually, if we were meeting in person, we might take a break. And I want to be cognizant of that rather than make everybody sit for five straight hours. And it might impact our time a little, but I think we'll make it up in the end. Does everyone want to maybe a comfort break for two or three minutes? You know, the board's kind of sitting here. I mean, if you guys are okay, we can continue or we can build in a two to three to five minute break. Any preferences? Because this is, we can do the seven inning stretch where we kind of stand up and stretch and
It depends if Amy's going to have a nervous breakdown.
Poor Amy. She's like, no, Anne Marie.
I didn't want to get too far off track, but five minute stretch is cool.
Five minute stretch.
I wouldn't mind five minutes to stand up for.
Okay, seven inning stretch here. So we could, you could blacken your screen or we'll take five minutes. I think we'll be okay. Thanks. So we have all the board back. So if you want to start with that, go ahead. If you want to.
Great. Well, thank you all for the opportunity. Certainly appreciate that. So I'm going to start off with a short video about leisure services. It does a great job. We actually put this together in twenty nineteen for our budget presentation. So a little bit of the information is slightly dated, but it provides a really good overview of our department. And thanks to our cable team for putting this together. So I am going to try and share this.
Canton Leisure Services has long been recognized as one of the leaders in parks and recreation in the nation. Since two thousand and four, Leisure Services has been accredited by the Commission for Accreditation of Park and Recreation Agencies, making it the longest standing nationally accredited parks and recreation agency in the state of Michigan and one of a hundred and seventy-eight accredited agencies in the United States. To reach this professional milestone, Leisure Services continues its tradition of providing exceptional facilities, programs and services that enhance quality of life within our vibrant community. In order for Leisure Services to succeed in meeting the needs of Canton residents, the department takes a multifaceted approach to identifying trends and challenges that affect our community. Staff proactively responds to these needs in an effort to define a clear and unified focus and direction that is used to shape all current and future programs and services. To do so, the department uses specific means and measurements by continually reviewing national standards to ensure that Leisure Services consistently maintains a high level of successful delivery of services. Frequent review of these statistics illustrates that Leisure Services regularly exceeds the national standards of best practices. One example is the cost recovery model, which compares revenues to expenditures. The current National Parks and Recreation Cost Recovery Average is twenty-nine percent. While the best practice of gold medal agencies cost recovery average is thirty-five percent. In comparison in two thousand and eighteen, Canton Leisure Services maintained a fifty-two percent cost recovery average. To enhance revenue, Leisure Services actively solicits alternate funding opportunities, including sponsorships, donations, as well as a variety of grants each year, which are used to offset the cost of providing programs, implementing capital projects and expanding programs and services. Two thousand and nineteen was a great year for Leisure Services. We've continued our goal of fostering a healthy community. This has been accomplished by educating and encouraging community members to be active and maintain healthy lifestyles. In Canton's most recent community survey completed in two thousand and fourteen, ninety-one percent of households indicated that they had visited a leisure service park or facility during the past year, which is significantly higher than the national benchmark average of seventy-two percent. The most frequently mentioned Canton facility was the Summit on the Park. The Summit's Fitness Center currently provides over six thousand members access to state-of-the-art fitness equipment, as well as fitness classes and additional resources to improve health and wellness. In addition, the Summit on the Park remains a popular In addition, the Summit on the Park remains a popular community destination that attracts more than 600,000 visitors each year. The Summit's new personal care pantry, which is stocked by donations from the community, also helps meet the needs of residents who utilize the emergency food assistance program by providing them access to important personal care items such as toiletries, adult diapers, or other non-food items not covered by supplemental nutrition assistance programs. The Block Youth and Teen Centers After School Outreach Program, known as Canton Youth Connection, completed its first year of 23 weeks of swim lessons to participants. These free lessons, which are held at the Summit on the Park, were originally started with CDBG funds for at-risk participants and included all of the equipment as well as instruction. Prior to these lessons, 83% of participants had never previously had a swim lesson. After participating, 100% of the participants improved in five different skill areas. Each year, Leisure Services therapeutic recreation programs offer more than 100 hours of individuals with disabilities to remain healthy and physically active through adaptive fitness classes. Additionally, the program offers opportunities to build important interpersonal and life skills, from grocery shopping to dining out, from cooking for themselves to mailing letters at the post office. While these program participants of all ages spend time at these adaptive camps and classes, family members are offered equally important opportunities for respite. Leisure Services also continues to focus on connecting community. Canton Leisure Services' commitment to all members of our community has never been stronger. "You belong here" is not only a current marketing campaign, but is also the driving force behind our policy, planning, vision, programming and public outreach. Diverse holiday celebrations, cultural representation and recognition are met with gratitude and appreciation at programs, in facilities and on social media. Recent cross-cultural events included the Canton Culture and Cuisine Tours, which enabled participants to visit and learn about a variety of different houses of worship in the Canton community, all while sampling a variety of cultural dishes. In addition, the resident-driven Leisure Services Inclusion Task Force was developed to gain insight and feedback into serving the diverse needs of our community. Moving forward, Leisure Services remains committed to continuing these important access and inclusion initiatives. Another way that Leisure Services helps to connect our community is by providing 15 miles of trails for walking, biking and jogging, and in winter months, cross-country skiing. Leisure Services is currently working with the Municipal Services Department on expanding and enhancing the Lower Rouge Trail crossings. Specifically, the Trail Access Point located at Sheldon and Lot's Road will be getting additional upgrades to improve visibility and safety with work continuing into 2020. Canton Mobility Transportation Service continues to successfully partner with Nankin Transit Commission Services to offer transportation not only in Canton, but also to Wayne, Westland, Garden City and Inxter. Canton residents who are eligible to use Canton Mobility Transportation include individuals who are 55 years of age and older, those who are temporarily or permanently disabled, as well as those who qualify for Social Security. This provides a better individualized service for residents at a much more affordable rate than opting into the Smart Bus Service. Leisure Services also continues to focus on creating a vibrant community. The Leisure Service vision of creating great experiences is based on the belief that through great leisure programs, facilities and open spaces, vibrant and dynamic communities are created and enhanced for current and future generations to take advantage of. This is accomplished through continual evaluation of current programs and offerings. As a result, staff identified a need to rebrand, expand and revitalize several initiatives this year. As a result of innovative programming and marketing changes to Canton's Thursday Night Live concert series, average weekly attendance more than doubled for all seven free outdoor concerts that are held in Heritage Park. Staff enhanced the concert experience by adding a variety of food trucks, family-friendly activities, in addition to a monitored beer and wine garden. Canton's 2019 Liberty Fest was met with some difficult weather challenges for the first time in a number of years. Leisure Services worked closely with other township departments to make some significant changes to the festival's layout. In addition, nearly insurmountable weather-related obstacles had to be met with creative solutions. In spite of the stormy weather, Friday saw one of the festival's largest crowds to date. The 28th anniversary of this festival was truly a testament of success that is possible when Canton Township Departments demonstrate such an outstanding commitment to teamwork. Leisure Services also continues to focus on preserving our resources. Environmental stewardship is at the forefront of every park design in Canton. Environmental sustainable practices and strategies are implemented to improve parks and golf courses. Pond management continues to be a high priority area since ponds are vital to wildlife in our parks, as well as stormwater runoff and for irrigation on our golf courses. This past year, pond aerators were installed near Pheasant Run Golf Course as part of a pilot project in an effort to combat algae growth without the use of chemicals. Based on successful results, the program will be continued and expanded in 2020. Additional environmental practices are currently being implemented in response to the assault on wetlands by Fragmites, an invasive plant that has had a massive impact on the ecological health of Michigan's wetlands. Staff has developed a management plan that will help prevent, detect and eradicate this aggressive species. If left untreated, this wetland grass will continue to grow and crowd out all other plants, as well as eliminate natural feeding grounds for fish and waterfowl. The Parks, Golf and Facility Maintenance Staff have been working hard to maintain and improve our facilities and spaces. LED lighting has been installed by Leisure Services staff in many township facilities with significant cost savings by keeping these types of projects in-house. As Leisure Services continues to proactively meet the changing needs and desires of Canton residents, it is important to regularly focus on planning and projects for the future. This can only be accomplished with the strategic planning that effectively and efficiently utilizes our resources to achieve these crucial initiatives. Future projects will include: Community Needs and Assessment in the Master Plan, Preservation Park Pavilion Installation, Canton Sports Center Facility Enhancements, Develop a Tree Management Program. The Canton Sports Center continues to receive enormous positive feedback about its recent field renovation. In 2020, a field groomer is proposed for purchase to maintain these fields to their new standard. In an effort to continue improving all player and spectator experiences, staff will apply for grants to fund additional facility enhancements, including dugout improvements and other updates to current Victory Park amenities. Canton Leisure Services.
Okay. So that's a great overview put together by our cable team of everything that Leisure Services does. And there I have a handful of slides to talk you through as well. So we will jump over to that portion of the presentation.
Oh, too long for the days when weather was our only concern about liberty.
Right, right. Clearly, much of that footage and information was pre-COVID and we're hoping to someday get back to post-COVID standards for everything. We know a lot of things will change, but in this presentation, I have a little more information about things that we've done in 2020 to still meet the needs of the community as well. So we'll start off, this is our organizational chart right here. We have in, within Leisure Services approximately 60 full-time positions currently. The highlighted positions there are vacant positions that we have right now within the department. In addition to this, the true working force of Leisure Services, our part-time employees, approximately 80 plus percent of our workforce is part-time employees and the hours that they put in and customer service that they provide is really what makes Leisure Services happen. As a resident and customer, you're much more likely to have multiple interactions with our part-time employees without ever interacting with myself or any of these other full-time employees. So they are really our boots on the ground out there working with the residents day-to-day. Leisure Services assets that we maintain, the video talks about a lot of these different assets. Obviously, folks know about the Summit, Sports Center, those types of things. But things that you may not think of when it comes to Leisure Services are over on the right-hand side of this slide. 500 acres of parkland. We also plow 40 acres of parking lots anytime that there's snow and ice. Leisure Services comes out, we maintain the, the parking lots for the admin building, all of our different Leisure Services facilities on various township resources throughout, throughout the township as well. Maintain lighting on the ball fields, pedestrian trails. 450,000 square feet of facility space. Our facility staff maintains not only Leisure Services facilities, but all township facilities, including the administration building, public safety building. So there's a lot that goes into that that you might not traditionally think of with Leisure Services. The video touched on Capper real quick, so I'm not going to discuss or dwell on this too much. We've been accredited since 2004. We've been the longest accredited agency in Michigan. Our next review is up in January of 2023. Recent initiatives include Copper Park installation. Many of you were at that grand opening this year. There's a little bit more left to be done on the backside. That was all funded through CDBG dollars there. We're currently working on copper, on the copper roof replacement at the summit. You've probably seen a lot of work going on there if you've driven by there. Fun projects like dredging of a pond at Fellows Creek. And it's a really exciting project for us, but not something that you may be real excited to go out and watch. We had a scuba diver in there in the last couple of days. We had to break some ice to get down in there. That's certainly not a job that I would want to do. But part of the process out there. Modifications that we've made over 2020, obviously sanitation has been huge purchase of electrostatic sprayers because we are responsibility for maintenance, not just in Leisure Services facilities. We've been doing, working a lot with public safety, police and fire. We took over some cleaning of fire for fire buildings for a little while just because we wanted their staff to be able to be focused on being out in the community, servicing them and not have to come back and clean their fire stations as well. They've since taken that back on. But those are the types of things that we're doing there. Obviously, social distancing, promoting that, changing our customer messaging. We haven't been, we did not do a Discover brochure in 2020 because we are, our last two Discover's, we skipped. So we've been really focusing on digital marketing. And another big initiative has been virtual and small group outdoor activities, transitioning our entire programming model and that is staff just really being creative and coming up with new, new ways to service the community. And the community has really responded to those. Some facility modifications that we've done, Pheasant Run, for example. We installed a service window to be able to service customers on the outside of the building when customers weren't allowed in. We put dividers in all of the carts to be able to allow two people to use a cart in a safe way. Canton Sports Center, a lot of rule changes, sharing of equipment, spectator regulations, requiring social distancing. Summit on the Park, if you've been there, we've reconfigured the entire facility, relayed out all of our equipment so that there's at least 10 feet of distance between any equipment there to try and make it as safe as possible, as well as meet the governor's and health department orders on, on all those pieces of equipment and usage of a community center. The community has really responded to the changes that we've made and the offerings that we have. Pheasant Run had a banner year with an increase of revenues by 15% over our average, which has been a really, really fantastic. There hasn't been much, especially early in 2020, much else that you could do. So people were getting out and golfing and our staff really responded by meeting the needs of the community. We didn't open the sports center until early August, but we've had fantastic participation. We actually increased the number of people that were involved in the GCY BSA program this year. Summit on the Park, we opened in early October. We are still currently at about 35% of our typical usage, but we are seeing uses build, especially as we're getting into New Year's resolution time. So we're implementing a few other strategies to make sure that we can keep social distancing and not go over capacity. We've actually had to expand our hours a little bit more to go closer to our normal hours just to spread people out a little bit more so we don't have people too close. Recreation Division, we've done much more smaller virtual programs as well as small special events. And we have had just an outstanding response. Many of our events and programs selling out and having wait lists. We'd love to be able to offer more to the community, but with, with having smaller events right now for social distancing and keeping everyone safe, we're unfortunately not to meet, not able to meet the need of the entire community. But we expect a lot of these new programs that we've developed over the last few months to continue into 2021 and beyond. Information technology needs that we'll have as a department going forward. We'll, we'll need a new ticketing software for our theater. Our current software program actually went out of service in December, on December 31st of 2020, that the company is no longer servicing that technology. So we will need to find a new option for the theater and we're exploring options that will also include live stream performance options. So if we're not able to have audience in a traditional manner, can we sell tickets and provide a live stream so people can watch our performances at home? Public Wi-Fi at all of our facilities, including parks, is, is a trend for the future. And increasing those abilities, mobile technology for cashless transaction, that was something that we really wanted previous to COVID-19 and has really become a priority now with, with the pandemic. And then facility maintenance and park asset management system, this is really something that will help us to be more progressive in the future. We want something that'll be integrated with mobile work orders and inspection seats. So if you're out in the field and you fill out an inspection sheet and there's something that needs to get done, it'll automatically generate a work order, assign that to somebody and close that loop to make sure anything that needs to get done actually does get done and we can track all that information. And then have that information to make better recommendations to the board for repair and replacement recommendations for any, any equipment that we need to repair or replace. Grants and alternative funding, this has been something that we've been cognizant of for many years and really have been pushing forward. So you can see many of the items that we're looking for here. Some of the things that we'll be bringing to the board hopefully in the near future is a DNR Recreation Passport Grant. And we're also looking at the Save Our Stages Act, which came out within the latest federal stimulus package. There was a Save Our Stage Act provision in there. The requirements and process have not been released yet, so we're staying on top of that and making sure that if and when the applications come out for those fundings, we're prepared and ready to jump on that as quickly as possible. So I'm sure it'll be competitive and likely on a first come, first served basis as some of the other stimulus dollars have been. Our planning documents that talk, the video talked a lot about this as well. Everything that we do, we try and have a process for doing it. We have our capital improvement program, street strategic plan, a recreation program plan, et cetera, et cetera, business plans that aren't even listed in here. So we try, as a department and with our accreditation, we're, we're strategic about everything we do. We don't just throw programs out there because they, they're fun. We try and do them because there's a, a thought process of how they meet the community needs and goals of the township and our department. Part of that strategy is our community survey. The video talked a little bit about our 2014 survey results. We conducted one in early 2019 as well. Here are some of the, the key highlights in there. I know Supervisor Graham Hudek was forwarding the full survey results to the entire board. We do this every five years as part of our planning process and we do it strategically in conjunction with our master planning process. We do our Leisure Services Master Plan every five years. We typically do this the year after our community survey and that is purposeful and that we utilize the information that we have learned from the master, or from the community survey to help guide our master planning process. A master plan is also required for accreditation process, DNR grants and other grants as well. The DNR has specific guidelines of exactly what needs to be included in our master plan and what should not be included in our master plan as well. It's really capital-focused, facility-focused and driving our assets. And we cannot apply for a DNR grant unless we have an approved master plan on file with the DNR. So our current master plan expires at the. master plan on file with the DNR. So our current master plan expires at the end of two thousand twenty, or no, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-one. So we will be working it throughout this year to develop a master plan. We're gonna be sending out a request for proposal to find companies to assist us with this process. Um, some additional content that we're looking to include in the master plan this year is a comprehensive community inventory. Um, benchmarking of our service standards towards uh, national standards, as well as uh, an analysis of ten minute walks to parks. I know this is something that the board is very interested in. Um, and we want to make sure um, from a, a multifaceted view that we're working towards meeting this need that, that could include. So part of that analysis will be including uh, will be looking at connectivity. Do we have the proper sidewalks in place or trails in place? So we'll have to work with municipal services on that as well. Um, are we connecting to private parks, public parks, or do we need uh, more parkland um, to meet that need? So all the community um, members have access to different areas within the park. And one thing I wanted to take a few minutes here to do is give the board the opportunity. If you have any input on um, what, uh, if there's any other um, items that you feel we should be looking at uh, when we're talking about master plan. It's an opportunity for you, if you have anything.
Thanks Greg. Do we have any questions? I know the video had a lot of great information in it. Thank you. It was a good change up.
In, in addition to that, I, I do wanna extend to, or um, if there, if there are no questions or thoughts on the master plan, RFP, that we're gonna be sending out. One thing I, I'd like to offer to everybody is an opportunity to come out and take a tour of all of our facilities. Uh, once you get out and take a look and see, um, you know, you've been in the, the pump room of the aquatic center or the mechanical areas of the village theater, you start to get a different perspective of what really goes on at these facilities. So whether it's individual or a small group tour, uh, offer you that opportunity, please reach out to myself. Um, and I have um, some more in-depth packets that I bought at that time. So if there's any particular areas of interest that you have prior to taking one of those two tours as well, please let me know. And I can make sure I provide that information.
Thank you. And, and we know we're gonna have, just to let you know, a lot of study sessions on um, leisure services items. So um, Stephen, you had something?
Yeah, did we use a facilitator last time when we did the plan? I seem to remember that, but I, I
Yes, we did. The master plan, we, we typically use um, a facilitator for that. Um, it's we wanna make sure that we're getting an outside perspective on that, so that we can really cross-reference national standards. Plus, it's a very in-depth process and with everything we're doing right now, to handle that with internal staff would certainly be a challenge for our workload.
Okay, Tanya?
Yeah, I just want to know, like, um, is there, based on the, I, I was part of the inclusion task force when it began. And uh, are we doing any more initiatives? Are we doing any more study sessions or, you know, focus groups to that? Or is there a plan to continue with that?
Yeah, we're certainly continuing with our You Belong Here uh, programming and process and making sure that we're continuing to uh, try and meet the diverse needs of the community. John, I know you were more involved with that task force. Maybe you can touch on that a little bit more.
Yeah, we have plans for both our ADA and inclusion tasks to continue meeting. Uh, obviously, we're just, it's been a rough year for that. So uh, yes, we certainly have plans to continue. We've got invaluable feedback from both those groups and we look forward to being able to continue both of those missions and, and helping our department kind of cater to where the, the direction that we need to be, to be heading. So yeah, certainly have plans to, to keep both of those going.
Greg, you also have a number of committees, um, which doesn't go through the normal process. Do you wanna just touch on those? Because you are looking for some people for some of those committees, is that correct?
That's correct. So we have our um, key one, we'll be looking for a board member on um, right now is our leisure services advisory committee. So that's a citizen, if a group, uh, we try and look for a divide, diverse group on there. We have seniors, youth. Um, sports representation, different, we try and get somebody from different areas. Uh, we would like a board representative on that. We have cultural commission, our senior advisory council. Some of those, like the cultural commission is uh, board appointed positions, a leisure services advisory and senior advisory are not board appointed. And we also have our transportation committee as well. Maybe missing some in there was um, Parma, we're also involved with that. Wasn't Road, Road, Pheasant on Road Managers Association.
And our Youth Advisory Council as well.
Thank you, John. I knew there was probably something that I was missing.
So if you're looking for members for some of these, are we, um, where do people find that? Are we, can we put that in the focus also? If you're looking for outside residents, because I know a lot of residents have asked about joining some of these committees.
Yes, certainly. Anytime that we have resident positions, whether it's a board appointed or um, staff appointed position on any of these committees, we'll advertise those in the focus. Um, I believe uh, our staff is working with Amy on cultural commission vacancies that we have right now.
Okay, thank you. And actually, I know some of these might not have board representatives, but they still, board members still can be part of these committees, correct?
Absolutely. We're always happy to have board um, input on all of our committees.
Thank you. Any other questions? Nope. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Greg and John.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
And during COVID, we know that you've been able to think outside the box. And like you said, the outdoor events, I've gotten a lot of emails on how great they are. And people wanna still be connected, even though we're apart. So this is a good way to do it also virtually, which we're seeing.
Yeah, staff is really uh, taking that challenge uh, head on and just stretch their creative brains and come up with fantastic ways to meet the needs of the community. We've, we've got a lot of virtual fitness classes going on, virtual programming, virtual block. We've done a lot of virtual programs and if we have a nice mild weather, mild winter and an early spring, we'll be able to get people back outside as well.
Thanks. So if anyone wants to join from the board, they're fun. All right. Thank you. Thanks very much. Next up, we have uh, uh, our chief Chad Bow. Um, Chad, did you have slides or you're going to speak to your pack?
I do have slides, uh, updated some of it. I don't think we'll get to it in thirty minutes, but I have some uh, updated slides for the board to look at in consideration to the, the crime updates for the, for the year. And I appreciate it. I'll um, shoot my screen now.
And, and you did, I mean, we did just go through a study session with you and that doesn't mean we can't do more.
That's right. Let me try to share my screen, but is everyone seeing that or no?
Yes. We see your overview screen. Yeah.
Okay, do you see the Canton Police one-on-one?
Yes.
Okay. You know, with a study session like this, I, it's important to also come out of the back end, understanding what the board wants. We've had a extreme, strong foundation and relationship with the community. We've been very successful. Um, I think it's important for the board to understand why we do what we do. Why does the police department exist? And it comes down to service. We serve our citizens in the region. Ensure safety, ensure justice. And when we come out on the back end, there's a lot of different things that we do that are just not known to the um, common citizen and probably the board, is we do a lot of things that are outside uniform services. And about seventy-five percent of our organization is uh, in uniform. And we're gonna get through some of that, but what you see there is excellence in service and that is our goal. That's the vision statement that we set here. And we make it short. Uh, it, in my opinion, it has to be short. So when we're conflicted, we're in a struggle. We're in a situation where um, as you know, as you see quite often in two thousand twenty, um, the police had a tough year. A tough year and we're in the midst of change. We're in the midst of the change and the evolution, the progress of policing. And if you always have it in the back of your mind as an individual working for this community, that excellence is our goal. Um, it's easy to remember. It's easy to recover. It's easy to um, implement when you know what the vision is. So we want a holistic approach. You know, we're programming a police department, uh, and we're looking to supply some archaic systems. We're looking at some of the legislation that is going through. And I believe some of it uh, is really gonna change policing and how we do things, not, not only at the local level, but at the state level. And we, back to the service, structures cannot be more important than the service that we're providing for the citizens. So you should see the organizational chart there. And that's how we're set up. Like I said, seventy-five percent of the police department. Uh, seventy-two percent of the command staff, including myself and the deputy chief, are um, in uniform services. Uh, seventy-four percent of the uh, police department is in uniform. We do have approximately eleven, twelve investigators that are not in uniform. Um, a little context, we do provide supervision and direction for the dispatch center, which also includes eighteen uh, PSOS and six PSAs. PSAs are those who perform intake services in concert with their PSOS. So those that come into our police department, um, that are being housed at our police department are um, supervised by our dispatch and ultimately are a lieutenant, um, who oversees the dispatch center. So we have um, investigations patrol. We have the special services lieutenant, which encompasses your school resource officers, your select enforcement officer, officers, which are like your motorcycle officers in the summer. And they're, they rotate back into the patrol vehicle, depending on the weather. Our community relations officer and the training officer division. There's, there's one officer actually recently assigned as a September to training to improve our services there and we'll get to that. We have six patrol lieutenants or four patrol lieutenants and uh, one investigative lieutenant that's in charge of all our investigations, which includes uh, a surveillance team, our um, undercover officers and our six detectives. And uh, the back about twelve years ago or so, uh, I believe we, I think it was about twelve years ago, we came in charge of the ordinance department. So we work quite often with um, the rest of the township with our ordinance department on different issues. We also have a crime analyst that's um, positioned in our investigative bureau. Um, patrol services. So I think it's important to understand this, you know, I have a quote there, the sum is greater than all these parts, you know? We have to come together with our police services and that's how we function so well. So we have patrol, we have our dispatch, we have investigations. One of their biggest risk management issues are prisoner care. Many people that come to us are sick or in some sort of crisis. And we've talked about it at the study session, how we can help not only the citizens in the field, but those that are in crisis with us. Um, we have a community engagement team that we started approximately three years ago. Uh, they do great things within the organization and, and in the field. The training is so important to how we perform in the field. The holistic policing approach is so important to the legal components, the tactical components. So we perform services there, not only within a law, but are actually um, right on par with our goal of excellence in service. Um, we have many support services that we're in part of uh, with Wayne West, Wayne Rescue Recovery. Um, with some of the other um, social work concepts and hopefully soon our embedded social workers, so bringing everything together. We do a lot of force multiplying here in the township with regional partnerships. We have investigators that are also uh, cross sworn as federal deputy marshals. Um, so when we uh, search for fugitives, uh, they're wanted by Canton and some of our partners that are committing crimes in Canton, um, we do have that um, dual um, destination as a federal marshal with seven of our employees. We have people assigned to a drug task force, which um, we're actually the fiduciary for the largest task force in the state of Michigan and the finance department's been wonderful in helping us uh, understand and how to control the finances and pay the bills essentially for the Department of Justice in Detroit. So we think about process and why we perform uh, police services, we have to understand that we have to consider the environment most, most externally than internally. As we start to progress, we start to think about some of the things internally. There um, have been uh, problematic for officers that time and time again, the things that they see in the field. So we're really progressing there externally to understand how we perform in the field affects the overall face of government. So we're in the field daily, you know, up to fifty-five thousand complaints a year. We're down a lot this year, mostly because of COVID. Um, but we have to understand our environment and we teach and coach and train to that. Uh, we have a real measured vig, uh, rigor within our organization when it comes to chain of command. You have to have a chain of command in a police department. This is um, in an uh, environment where you're, the oversight and the policies, the laws that our officers have to know and implement uh, need to have a strong chain of command. And we have that and we've had that for thirty years. Uh, the legitimacy of process, and when I talk about our process, there has to be legitimacy to it. It cannot just be uh, top level, at shelf level. It has, we have to be proficient. We have to actually leave it and make sure that we're performing in the field and ensuring justice throughout our, our days. Um, consistency. So that, that touches a little bit on external and internal environment. We have to be consistent. We, the things that we do have to be deliberate, they have to have substance. They have to have a reason for what we do. So there's, needs to be consistency and that's what we're focused on is a police administrative team. Uh, some of the fundamentals of uh, a policing agency, especially for us. Um, we focus on community policing. It's a philosophy, uh, we emphasize partnerships, problem solving at the local level, finding ways to problems, especially as we look at diversion, diversion and different ways to exhaust non criminal matters to provide services. That's what you're gonna really see in the coming years is the move to supplant some of the traditional ways of policing. You're gonna see a uh, movement towards finding services for people. They need help. Um, training, the training opportunities with our employees. You know, they reach far beyond whatever is mandated by the state of Michigan and the federal government. Our training is beyond what any agency in the southeast Michigan has with our constitutional policing concepts, the concept training at um, roll call. It's the focus on fair and impartial policing, de-escalation strategies for all police encounters. And it doesn't just come in the tactical training. It comes through actual face-to-face training um, from our uh, ground level supervision all the way through the administration. Accountability, yeah, we have probably the most, as I talked about the chain of command, we have one of the rigorous oversights and how we um, direct our team's management is um, layered through all internal investigations and how there is accountability for every complaint that comes in. And we spoke a little bit about that in other study sessions. Transparency, this is a big movement starting this year is become more transparent and providing information to the public. The public wants to see this. Uh, Monday, we'll be starting uh, the uh, genesis of the future with a transparency committee pushing out information, much like we talked about, it's a study session, but you'll see some progress there. And um, I'd like to see some more ideas come through the uh, board to see what you wanna see. The first revolutions will come out here in this month. And um, we'll, we'll get a little bit of a feedback from you folks to see where you wanna go with what the public wants to see from our organization. And I, I see pushing that out through our website. Strategic plan, like other organizations, other parts of this organization, the Canton Township, we all have a strategic plan. We developed this with the board. Um, in eighteen, uh, so it's approved by the board. So you see the goals there's, the goal there and we can go over it a little bit here. The development of the workforce plan. So law enforcement as a whole is moving from these broad strokes, robotic type policing into more of a precise uh, follow-up, precise uh, way of addressing local problems. So we will continue to look at the best courses of action, look at the law, look what we can do, look at our resources that are available for us currently. Um, departmental staff, we were approved by the board to increase our swarm policing from ninety-two to ninety-six. We've done that. Right now, I think we can maintain it ninety-six. Um, given the fact that there are, our cost per service really went down in ninety, uh, into twenty-twenty because of COVID. And I would imagine we'll see a little bit of the rebound in twenty-twenty-two as we push through twenty-twenty-one. Enhanced policing partnerships, like I said, we have um, great partnership with the federal marshal system. We uh, have ongoing partnerships with the FBI, the DEA, uh, community partners like Hagira, First Step, Growth Works. Um, we started the new diversion program and um, the CIT program, which is a crisis intervention team. And we also created the relationship with Western Lane Recovery, um, that we were one of the four. That we were one of the four founding police agencies working with St. Mary's and First Step as we've put that together. Continuing on our strategic plan, which ends in twenty-twenty-three. We've had number and numerous outreaches. So to enhance our community engagement. It was very much a struggle during COVID, but we found different ways to do so. We had over two hundred events the year before. We've done very well this year. We're looking to develop the embedded social worker two in twenty-twenty-one. That position should go out for bid in January twenty-first. And that will help us impact the overall success of citizens in crisis. But we like to call that embedded social worker like a resource worker for not only internally for our police officers, but for the citizens to find ways to help our citizens. Recruitment retention personnel, we're starting to see that this PSA program that we put in place with board. In the last year is maybe the hinting at how we're going to handle and be able to fill our positions. We're seeing some, some of our folks go to police academy as of this month. So we're looking to use this program where they come into our organization, we get to see how they work. And they are assigned to the police academy by our agency and I see them backfilling the open positions. Evidence-based technology, our camera systems that we just put in place are. Just extraordinary. I appreciate the board for their support. They've been in place for a couple of weeks now and we're really excited. They are working as we thought they would. We were wanting to bring in a technology called Rapid DNA. We keep putting off each year because it has not been accepted as a standard in the state of Michigan, the FBI, the DOJ, I believe. Are close to seeing it's a good technology. But if we get to that point that it really turn, probably turn around some of the time, we have to wait for we identify suspects. Maintain a high level of service, the community and maintenance and acquisition of physical resources. We have a very quality fleet. We're looking to close some of the security issues behind the station. With administration building, the front counter, the records bureau. And we're looking at using not only the capital improvement plan, we have nine-one-one funds. And some of the other funds we have available to us in our budget. Just give you a little overall concept of how day-to-day operations work with the police department. We want to create an environment of omnipresence, not an overbearing police presence, just omnipresence to know that the police are available for everyone. When it comes to traffic crash areas and crime areas, we like to displace crime from Canton by just presence. So we like to disrupt. When we know things are going on, we're going to disrupt with both our patrol division and our investigative bureau as needed. Our investigative resources, there's a concept of dismantle. When you know someone is. The origin of the crime, we will find that individual and seek them out through our investigative efforts. Hopefully dismantling, dismantling the small little crime cell that comes. In Canton, we don't see. We do see like. Pretty detailed investigations come through, pretty interesting investigations. That take us either to other, other parts of southeast Michigan. It's usually retail related or fraud related. Or some of our aggravated assaults take us out of the township from time to time. Community engagement, like I said, it's been a little bit of a challenge this year. Typical year, we have about two hundred community engagement outings. We did very well this year. Trying to get the final numbers put together, but I think we should be close to that level again this year. But we found so many different ways to accomplish that. Special services, this is where I do a lot of different things with our records bureau. Our training, our standards, some of the compliance, our accreditation came through again this year. It's the thirteenth year we've been accredited. You see in the slide, some of the things our records bureau does and that has a lot to do, FOIA and bond and court communications. Pushing information to the prosecutorial office, which is local and state firearm permits. And a lot of records requests. We have some pending topics. We talked about security, we talked about the social worker. Continually look to find different ways to progress as a police department. Backfilling positions, legacy planning, focused on where we're going as an organization while remembering where we came from. The span of control of the organization, organizational structures, an issue. Looking to fill some of the positions that we've lost here recently and succession planning. As people retire, that's always on the forefront of our mind. And how criminal justice reform actually affects the region, the community. And how we best implement the new laws that are coming our way. So some of the technology needs that we see coming is we want to move away from paper. It's twenty-twenty-one, we're going to find ways to do it. And it's not the township, it's in our funding, it's necessarily a problem. It's just the way law enforcement works in present day Michigan. So we're looking to find ways to meet the requirements and the partners we need to get information to have to be on the same system. We want our command, some of our select command members to have some laptops because they do so much work outside the organization. They would be more willing to use their own personal laptops, but it subjects them to different FOIA. Opportunities for others. Webcams for all our computers. We want to look at updating all the monitors at every workstation, consistent applications for Microsoft. The IT department's already working on some quick sign-ins and pins for our dispatchers, some things timeout. In a paperless process also for prisoner reception, we're taking on weekends, there's where we rein prisoners has moved down to thirty-sixth district court. Which is a city Detroit and this is going to be a game changer if we can move into a system where it's paperless. And the speed of. A paperless system could be very helpful in getting prisoners in and out of our detention area. A good way to handle their medication and the delivery of their medication, some different types of suicide observation techniques. So we're looking forward to find ways to improve things like that. And in the next year, I'd like to do some type of study. I don't see it being successful necessarily because we're tied into an RMS system. That is regional, but there are better systems out there. It would just hamstring us because we'd be on our, by ourselves, but I'd like to do a study that will get RMS systems, a CAT system, some of the analytics. That can be done through more progressive systems that are out there. And field processing of defendants in the field, I see that as a future progression of policing. I don't know if that'll ever happen in the next year or two. To be able to process somebody right in the field so they never even have to be in a jail cell. We're looking to upgrade our computers, we're looking to upgrade the dispatch center using our nine-one-one funds and some CIP funds that we've talked about. And upgrading our computer systems and access points or not computer camera systems and access points. One thing I need to talk about real quick is dispatch center. It cannot be unsaid that we have some of the most dedicated and professional employees in that dispatch center. It's becoming a very, very. Professional job from nineteen seventies to now, it's just a whole different, it's a crime center, it's an intelligence center. It's, it provides dispatching services at the highest level for a fire department that has the highest standards. There's a culture of service that you will not see at any other police department or dispatch center. And I'm pretty proud of that. So the opportunities coming ahead for that area, I think is important. The service that you get out of that dispatch center is exceptional. Our intelligence center, I see that like I talked about earlier, I didn't, it's the epicenter, just making that into a twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Type dispatch center is something I would look forward to in the near future. And to your. You know, at your own leisure, there's the five-year trends of how our crime has changed. One of the most important things that you'll see this year is our part one crimes are down seventeen percent. Property crimes are down twenty-one percent. That's primarily what you see in Canton, but the violent crimes are up eighteen percent. One of the things too is the cost per service decreased twenty-five percent and that started in March with COVID. So we typically run between fifty thousand to fifty-five thousand calls for service a year that includes traffic stops. We went down to forty thousand. Civil unrest, I don't know if this is anecdotal, I don't know necessarily why this occurred, but I think the board should realize that our officers. When you see CCW violations at the bottom of that screen, that means people we are arresting are carrying firearms. And you can see the prior years, in twenty-twenty-one, we had sixty-one people we arrested with firearms. Fleeing a lude, that's when people drive away from us and won't stop for our police officers and when they're being alerted through lights and sirens to stop. That went from eleven in two thousand nineteen to thirty-two. And this, I also have in there how we describe what crimes are. Our response times are important, our citizens should know. As a result of the twenty-five percent decrease in calls for service, we're able to also decrease our total response time. It's from the time you pick up the phone to an officer's at your door, they're nineteen minutes. Obviously, if it's a nine-one-one emergency. We haven't found a way through technology to. Hurt those out from the total calls for service, but. I can tell you firsthand, you're looking at a very quick response time for a crisis or an emergency. With our police department. And we've had a lot of success with our protests this year, meaning we engaged, we were part, we listened. And it's important to remember that, that's what we're doing right now, is listening to learn how the future steps of police. And their community interact and how we work within the law to take the next steps. So social unrest issues, we're very fortunate to have some of the partnerships we have with special interest groups. I think they realize very much so that we work with them. There was a call, I put up the slide two, I think I've been to before, you've seen an email and a press release that put this out. Because there are many police chiefs around the country who were asked to make a statement of what their feelings were about the death of George Floyd. And obviously, this came out earlier in the year, but just a reminder that that was a murder. That was a definition of a brave heart. They'll see me say that time and time again, that officer showed every sign of a brave heart. So in those that are assisting him, so our officers also feel the same way. But what that sparked in our country has exhausted the, exhausted our officers. Just they became overwhelmed at some points, had a lot of communication with our command staff and I couldn't be more proud of our police department. And they're resilient and they're ready to work for you and they're looking for this. Great support and they have it and they've had it for many years. So some of our successes are excellent talented police employees, they have progressive programming, our special operations group, our surveillance team. Our police officers in the field, our training, the diversion that we're just starting. Engagement that we've developed over the last three years, real true engagement with our citizens is exceptional. Accreditation continues and is at the highest level of Kalia, the international group. And we're focused on service like we started off, that's what I said at the beginning. And we do realize, and I know, that our trust with our community is our currency. Without that, our people, our citizens, those we work with and for. Would not be governed by us if they didn't trust them. So with that, I'd like to open up some questions and I thank you very much for. I don't know how much time I took, can't see Amy, so.
You did good. Actually, if you want to just talk about on Thursday, Chad will be part of a panel with the CWW. And I believe the NAACP will be there talking about some of the actions that have happened. You want to just give a little overview of that, Chad?
Yeah, Thursday, it's going to be virtual again through Facebook Live and that's going to be another venture because I never use Facebook for obvious reasons. But we'll jump on that and really it's an ongoing conversation with our community. Led by the NAACP and an independent moderator with not only twelve local police chiefs at least at this point. I know supervisor is going to be there too and lead from her area and I believe the HR manager may be awesome. Taking time to be out there to talk about HR components because some of the issues that are. Being highlighted, which we all agree with, I believe, is having a police department that represents our community. And we'll probably address some of those issues and try to find some paths to that. Which is a topic I didn't address in here, but we are looking to make our workforce look like our community. And one of the groups we haven't addressed is the Asian Indian community and seeking out applicants. And that PSA program is probably hopefully going to be a feeder for that. Oh, anyway, the whole goal of the Thursday night. Meeting is to listen. And from there, I think is we're going to find our most progress to understand where we failed as a. Police department and also provide context to why police operate the way they do. So that's my take on it. There's, there's great relationships with the NAACP and it started probably many years ago. And probably when the round table started too, we started some of those interactions back, I think around two thousand seven, two thousand eight. I remember going to some Outpack meetings and. And I think the supervisor knows much more of the history of that, but. We have a long ways to go, but the intent of that meeting is to learn, because otherwise we're just going to be explaining our results. We have to get back to the why and understand what is expected of us.
And so I'll send out the meeting notice to that in case anybody wants to watch that and be a part of that. Do we have any questions? No, I know we just had a study session where we did ask a lot of questions. So I don't know if we have any additional right now and obviously we can always ask questions. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. And we'll look forward to hearing you on Thursday.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Chief Stockline and we're going to discuss the fire personnel. The fire department. Chris, did you have a slide you're going to show?
I was just going to work off of the slideshow that I had sent over to you that's in the packet.
Okay.
I can certainly put a PDF up. I don't have the PowerPoint, but I can put the PDF up to follow along if you want that. I'll just have to scroll through it.
Oh, that's okay. Michael, I think we're still seeing the screen sharing from previous. Is that possible to, is everyone seeing that, the screen sharing?
Yep.
Maybe we can close that off.
Chad's screen, so I can.
Yeah, yeah. If you can close that.
Cancel that.
Thank you.
And that should allow. Director Stockline to share his screen.
If he, if he would like to. Thank you. Unless you just wanted to speak, it's your preference.
Well, like I said, I've got, you know, a little bit of difficulty with the working on the remote. And pulling in my stuff, but can you see that there? Or no?
No, but you can just speak if you want to.
Okay, that'll work. So, working through the slides there, I can tell you that our first thing, first slide. Is regards to our department organization or our flow chart and you'll notice that it's not real top heavy. And if you ever have the opportunity to see other fire departments, you'll know that they're very top heavy. You know, four or five assistant chiefs and deputy chiefs, you know, like Dearborn for example. And we really try, just like Director Boss said, try to keep the boots on the ground. So there's myself and the deputy chief that work in the administrative office with a secretary and a clerk. And along with the assistant management bar Russo. Other than that, everybody else is boots on the ground, including our fire prevention staff, which we'll talk about a little bit. But we are, like Corinne said earlier, we have got everybody in the background, so we will be fully staffed. As soon as we get these other new hires through the process. I think there's two in the background right now, or I'm sorry, that just completed background and they're in the psychological and physical. So as we move through that, I know that we had discussed earlier about a training officer position. And I will come through with the TA as we work on that TA and get that position in place. That'll be very helpful for the deputy chief and myself to help spread some of that administrative workout. Never had that position in the. Never had that position in the township before or in the fire department, so we're looking forward to having that to make sure that we get our training in for all the fire personnel and fire prevention division. So the second slide there just kind of shows our fire station, so, or those of you that don't know, there's three fire stations in the township. Station one is the one that's located right there by the public safety building and administration that was built in ninety seven. So that's a great station, it's in good shape, we continue to keep up the maintenance on that. Station three is the station that's out on Denton Road in Cherry Hill Village and that was built right around oh two. And that station is in great shape as well, so structurally, our infrastructure is looking really good. And as you all know, on the next slide, station two is being rebuilt as we speak and should be completed. They just pushed that back a little bit, so now we're looking at February timeframe. But the station is coming along very nice and it's going to be definitely a focal point for the community. I appreciate all the support on that and the work that's gone into it. I know it's been a long time coming that the original station there, you can see, built in the early seventies, is definitely outdated and definitely in need of repair. So when we went through all these study sessions and stuff, we had decided that it was cheaper to, I shouldn't say cheaper, it was better suited to build a new station than try to repair that station and bring that up to current standards. So with that being said, the, the new station is going to be very good for us operationally as we plan on moving some personnel out to that station. Once we get that station open, we'll be able to run two ambulances out of that station, which is going to increase our response times and I'll talk about that in a little bit as well. But having that extra personnel at that station is going to make a world of difference for us. The next slide talks about our comparative analysis and when you look at their comparative analysis, this is a one from nineteen. We didn't have an opportunity to do it here with all the COVID stuff going on in twenty, but we usually do this every single year. And you can see, those of you then on the board have seen this slide before. And we know that our, our twenty twenty census is going to put us well above a hundred thousand, which will lower our swarm per thousand and actually make us look even a little bit better than what this shows here. But with our budget and our, our cost per capita, you know, we're one of the lowest communities, comparable communities on a list there. At a hundred and seventy nine ninety six cost per capita. What, what's, what's important on this slide here is that you notice the three fire stations and that goes back to our response times again, which I'll get into in a little bit. Everybody else is, you know, five, six stations, which really, it's not so much for to say, hey, we have five stations or hey, we have six stations. But it really, really correlates directly to our response times and how fast we can get to these calls for service. And we can, like I said, we'll talk about that in just a little bit here. So the next slide, which is our grant funding. As you know, the fire department's been pretty successful over the past few years in receiving grant money. Well over a million dollars. And I would say, you know, even just our A F G grant was close to a million dollars alone, so that's the assistance of firefighter granting. Or the safer grant, I'm sorry, for staffing on firefighters, so back two years ago, we had received that grant for six firefighters and that basically pays seventy five percent of their salaries for the first, second year and then fifty percent of their salaries and benefits for the third year. So we're, we're coming into the third year on that and it's helped us to plan and bring these personnel on board here to help with the, the shortage that we had previous. But we continue to apply for these grants and you'll see A F G had just come open a couple of days ago, so we'll apply for that again. An assistant for fire, fire grant, they have about three hundred and seventy million dollars every single year that they give to fire departments across the country. So we always apply for it, we're not always the front runner in that because they, they really evaluate the department as a whole financially and they try to give that money to communities that cannot afford to pay for items, so like apparatus that we want to continue to replace. And I was explaining to the supervisor the other day, our apparatus, they get high mileage very quickly, our squads are two thousand sixteen squads. They've already run up to a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred and forty thousand miles on them in just a few years. Well, the A F G doesn't look at that as a old ambulance because it's only four years old, so they consider replacing ambulances when they are twenty years old. Well, we obviously couldn't drive an ambulance for twenty years to get that replaced on our A F G, so we've really struck out when it comes to things like that apparatus through the grants, but we've also been very, very successful. As you know, we just got the cardiac monitors for a hundred thousand dollars plus. We've received extrication equipment, self-contained breathing apparatus, that's the bottles that we wear into the fire as well as a couple hundred thousand dollars in COVID supplies in this past year, so we'll continue to work on that, continue to look at any opportunities we have out there. And this is not the full list of them, I mean, everything from even the electric vehicle chargers that we want to put in over at station two. There's a possible grant through D C E for that, so we really explore with, with the finance department all our options and what we can get. The finances have been great, they always help us with a lot of these, especially like the CARES Act and stuff like that to move us through this thing, but it's really important because in years past, prior to this current administration or even the previous one, I don't recall receiving a lot of grants through, for the fire department or even applying for grants back in the day, so I think it's, it's a positive on, on the current administration with Jamie and finance doing a lot of work for that, so. Fire Department Services, so I know that everybody pretty much knows what the fire department does, we respond to, you know, medical runs and car accidents and all that stuff. But it's important to know the service that we provide is a top notch service. Our fire suppression, as I said, you know, we're putting a training officer in, we do a lot of training for fire suppression. Because it's a high risk, low frequency situation, we're not out on fires every single day, so it's important that we continue to train the firefighters daily to make sure that they're prepared for that, just because they don't see fires every single day. Our advanced life support, when we did, we switched over to advanced life support in nineteen ninety seven, we started out with a couple squads, our ambulances that we had one at each station and that was our, our advanced life support, right? We had X M automatics that went through A L S program. And proudly today, we have all of our vehicles staffed with paramedics. There's not one basic E M P down, left down there. Every single unit is, whether it's an engine or it's our heavy rescue, they have some sort of advanced life support. It could be a limited life support or a full life support. And this makes a big difference because we know that our call volume is obviously up from where it was several years ago. And there could be a delay getting squads to the scene because they're so busy. So when that engine gets to the scene, they're able to do everything that an ambulance can do minus the transport, so they have all the medications on that, that engine. They have, you know, the defibrillators or monitors, they're able to do all the things that that ambulance can do while they're waiting for another ambulance, so that treat and place really becomes important and we've seen over the years how that, that correlates right to survival rates for patients. So we're very proud of what, where, where we've come from and where we're at today. Our fire prevention does a great job working in the community, they're out there. I'll be honest with you, we could use more prevention personnel. We get to all the businesses about once every five years is kind of our, our turnaround for our maintenance. And then the high risk things, you know, if it's gas stations or somebody that's storing hazardous chemicals, we'll get into those businesses every single year to do those maintenance inspections, but we really don't have the staff to reach every single business every single year, so we continue to monitor that. Obviously, our numbers are all, all over the place with this COVID last year, we can't get out and do inspections like we were doing before. So it's going to take a little time to reevaluate that and see, see where we end up. But we have started a lot of different programs in the fire prevention division, including residential inspections, which we never used to do in the past. So our inspectors will go out there, help homeowners, you know, make an escape plan, make a, make a plan for making sure that you know, everything's safe in their house, that they have smoke detectors in the right spots, carbon monoxide detectors in the right spots, all of those things. Car seat safety checks, it's a very popular program that we run. Obviously, this year it's been very hard to be successful with that program as well as our C P R and fire extinguisher training, so we'll be back on track once we get this COVID straightened out and be able to get back out there into the schools. That's a big thing as well, getting into the schools and making sure that we're teaching the young kids fire education, so. Once, once we get through this COVID, I know that we'll, we'll be back on track with that, so. The next slide that you'll see is our, our response time map, so going back to that response time and you'll hear me talk about it a lot. This was a map, the G I S map that when we were evaluating station two, we had come up with and we continued to evaluate it, so you can kind of see like the red dots there are the red areas or bright orange, whatever your eye color is, right? But needless to say, we have some areas of the township that are going to be longer response times, up in the ten minute response times and that. When we respond down to those areas, it's usually station one that's getting, getting called to that. And even up in the station three, up in the northwest corner there, it's very difficult for us to get up into that area, but more or less, the resources that we have are stationed in fixed locations, so there's not much we can do about that without assessing another fire station and we'll, we'll talk about that in just a minute here. So that first slide there is our mutual aid requested. And so you can see that over the years, we were, you know, a hundred, a hundred and sixteen there. We continue to raise, our mutual aids would go up, so every time that we see that mutual aid request go out, it becomes problematic for us, A, because it takes longer for an ambulance from another community to get into our community and treat a patient. The second part is, is that we want our paramedics treating our citizens. We know the expectations of our paramedics, we know their, their training and their ability and we know that they're going to get superior treatment when they're treated by a can paramedic. With that being said, there's been a lot of administrative changes over the years, over the past couple of years with accreditation that we've looked at and the deputy chief and myself, we've made a lot of adjustments to our staffing and how we dispatch that staffing. Where before we would have, you know, personnel set on that fire engine and, and an ambulance on our heavy rescue on, on all these apparatus, well, our ambulance would go out and then all of a sudden, we wouldn't have any ambulances left and we're calling for another community to come into ours. We've changed that where we have now made it so that we are moving personnel from a heavy rescuer from an engine over to another ambulance to get that ambulance out there and make sure that we can get there as fast as possible. Plus with the fact that we have A L S on every engine, we know that we can have that little extra bit of time, my personnel switch over, wide other engine is responding to that scene and being able to treat that patient, waiting for that ambulance, so. Some, some structural or I should say operational changes that have really helped out lowering those numbers for mutual aid requests. Our call volume, you know, we projected eighty six fourteen and we know that the, the call volume has decreased this year because of COVID, we ended up with a total of eighty seven hundred and fifty five calls for twenty twenty, so we were pretty close on our estimation. And this, these kind of numbers, these are things that we'd never used to look at in the past before we got into the accreditation, so it's important for us to be able to have accurate numbers and know what we're looking at. So with, with the decrease in the call volume this year, it's the first time we've ever seen a decrease in call volume in the history that I've worked here and we know that it's due to COVID, we can directly show, you know, January, February, March, how we were up in call volume and then as soon as April hit, we had a sharp decrease in the call volume, so. You know, we're not, we're not down a lot and we're seeing the, the effects of the COVID start to kind of wear off on the EMS here and we're starting to see people going back to the hospital, so we're seeing our call line pick back up. So we'll continue to evaluate our staffing levels and evaluate the way we're doing business and we'll have to kind of watch over the next couple of years to see where we're at before I bring any recommendations for you on staffing. But for, for now, the good news is, is that, that fifty six mutual aid request that we had looked at or I should say projected over the, this, this past year is now at sixty, so we received sixty mutual aid requests or calls from other communities come into ours. So you can see that a hundred and sixteen, ninety six, and now we're down to sixty, so we're definitely making a change in the right direction to bring, to make sure that our, our citizens are being, being treated by our, our personnel. And so moving out of the next slide is our average response time, so this slide here really kind of shows a, as we continue to increase in population, we continue to put more demand on the fire service, we see that, that increase in our response times this year. Let me see if I can share the slide here real quick. I got one slide here, I'd like to just share with you. If I can.
Oh, there you go.
You see that?
We can see it.
Okay, so this, this is kind of our, this is the run numbers that Jamie had just pulled up for us, Deputy Chief is Jamie, for those of you that don't know. That just pulled up for me yesterday and you can see this is our incident comparison by month. Make this a little bit bigger for you guys here. So this is our incident comparison by month and like I said, you can see that our twenty call volume was going to be, end up being a little bit higher and then all of a sudden nineteen, you know, nineteen's in the yellow and twenties in the red, it fell right off, so we were down every single month on that call volume. Our, our incident by hour still kind of staying the same. We know that when people are sleeping at night, there's not as many calls, so from midnight to five, six in the morning, we don't see that call volume as heavy. And then once seven o'clock, eight o'clock rolls around, we start seeing that pickup as people get on the road and out and they're actually calling us, so here's our mutual aid for medicals and our mutual aid for fires. So you can see that we've definitely improved for twenty, dropping that from ninety six thousand to sixty. And we've still providing about the same or similar to where we were the year previous. Same with our fire mutual aids, we've dropped significantly from eleven to three, so. But going back to the, to the turnout times and our, and our response times, so this is our emergency response times from nineteen and twenty. And you'll see our total response time, this is the time that from the person actually picks up the phone, gets on and, and then makes that call to dispatch and we receive the, the call, get out on the scene and we're able to treat the patient, so nine forty one is our total response time for fire in twenty compared to ten forty eight and nineteen. And then you'll see on the EMS side of things, we've actually gone up roughly forty seconds and that is due to a direct well, two things, first is COVID, so now when we're responding out on a COVID positive patient, our paramedics have to take more time in the station to make sure that they're putting their masks, gowns on, all these things prior to leaving the station, so that's where that, that little bit of time is increasing. And then there's also a new alerting system that we installed in the stations this year. And so we're still kind of working through that, the hope is, is that alerting system will decrease our response times, our turnout times. And we're, we're going to see that as we get more efficient at it. But you can see the total with between fire and EMS, our total response time is eight fourteen. So that's where, that going back to that map and looking at that map, we know that that we still have those long call times down there, and so when we're responding down to that corner of the township, which is quite often, that's bumping our total response times up, so this is our first unit that was, is on scene. So eight fourteen, these response times up here are total response times where every unit on scene that we need on scene, so if it's a working structure fire, we know that we have them on scene, everyone we need in nine minutes and forty one seconds. But this is our very first unit that was, that is on scene there, preferable firing in a mess, so it's kind of a mixture of both of them. Knowing that the average is eight minutes from the time somebody picks up the phone to the time that we're on scene there and treating them. And then I'll just go back to this to our, our slides here. So emergency management, I oversee emergency management with Chad and you know, prior to this COVID, Will was kind of called the weatherman because nobody really knew what he did other than make sure that everybody was aware of any. You know, storms coming in or, or, you know, snowstorms or rainstorms or anything like that. And he's really shown his value over this past year. We receive a fifty percent match for his salary. And he is in charge of all the planning, whether it's for Liberty Fest for emergency management. If it's for the high school, if it's for these COVID responses, you can see what he's done with the COVID trailer back there for the testing and, and the. Everything else. So. Quite, quite a array of, of things that he does. He's really great at what he does and we really. Would not have made it through this year without his help. So. He's very, very good at what he does, like I said, and make sure that we're covered. He, he does sit on quite a few boards with LPT and, and puts in for grants for that as well. That was how we were able to get radio systems for our firefighters and police last year. We're working on some more grants through that program for robots and stuff for our Western Wayne. Mutual aid. So. All of our USR, which is our, you know, confined space, high rescue, all those things and our hazmat teams. That's kind of the, the program that where it falls under is Western Wayne and we can continue to see that. Let me. Do this real quick. So our COVID nineteen, we know that we have. Definitely. Seen a lot of changes with COVID nineteen. As we continue to put new protocols in place for the fire department, we work with HR quite frequently as Karen said. Making the other protocols for the rest of the township with Karina and their other directors, which works well. Knowing that we're taking the best practices from the fire department, we're putting it into protecting the rest of the employees. Nothing to really go over on this because you, you all know that what we're doing with that and we continue to. Work with the, the rest of the employees to make sure that they're protected and make sure that we're doing the screening and following my OSHA rules. As you, as you've seen, we've gone through that and been successful on those, those investigations from my OSHA. Finally, we'll talk a little bit about our accreditation. So I know that we were the last department. In the organization to become accredited. We spent about six years going through this accreditation. And we're very proud of, of getting through. There were one of the four service, fire service agencies in the state of Michigan to, to do that. And it's evidence based decision making is what it basically comes down to. We. Make sure that we're, we're under a plan of continuous improvement. This is an outside agency looking at us. That knows the fire service and can make a independent judgment of us. And to get through this program, it's. It's really proof that we are providing the best service or we are following best practices. They came back with a list of things that we need to improve on as always, right? And that's part of that continuous improvement and part of that continues improvement. They labeled a few things. One of them was a, a station four or something down in that. Response area down in that southeast corner. They talked about our staffing levels. You know, a department this size that runs this, the size, we're very efficient with the staffing that we have. And that's because it goes back to the boots on the ground. And we make sure that. We are covered in the field, but they found some deficiencies, right? That like the training officer, things like that that they want to see. Accomplished. So as we continue through our annual compliances, this one's coming up here in the next month that Jamie's been working on. We're continuing to evaluate those deficiencies that they pointed out and we'll continue to do that. And one other thing about the, about the accreditation process is that. It wasn't just a process where we had put all of our stuff in and they evaluated it. When we moved through this, this six years, when we found these deficiencies, we started changing them. So. When we started, like I talk about our alerting system at the station or how we're staffing the ambulances and the squads, how we're staffing engines, how we're. Response time is really digging into our numbers so that we can show those numbers and, and have confidence that the numbers we're showing are accurate. That's all part of accreditation. They, they really improved us far beyond what we would have ever guessed going into that process. So. Last kind of thing that I wanted to talk, talk about was those future considerations. And when we talk about. The accreditation process, you know, that's, that's the things that we're looking at, right? When, when they're pointing out the aging apparatus or the staffing. Issues, station maintenance, station four, this, these are the things that you're going to be hearing from me. In the four years as you're on the board, as we evaluate them and we have plans of actions. We're going to come back to you and, and these are the things that, that you'll most likely hear about. And we'll, we'll continue to ask those questions and ask for your permission to move forward with, with fixing those things. I did send out the, our strategic plan for those of you that have not received it. I, I just emailed that prior to jumping on here. So you'll have that to look through. That has both police and fire. So for those of you that have not seen that. That kind of lays out our goals and strategies moving forward and we'll, we'll probably be back into that in the next. Year and a half and start reevaluating that and looking at the following strategic plan. So with that. I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Chris. And also the COVID site, you're kind of, did you? That will be opening and more information will be coming to the board on that really quickly this week. I think we're going to be getting some opening. On that, just to let you know. Kate?
Thank you. Really interesting information and I'm glad that you included. You know what? What sort of things will be coming to the board? Down the line. I'm wondering when you were talking about the. Advanced life support and how the, all the different. Fire department vehicles are, are equipped. I'm wondering, does that include epinephrine and? And all the. Not just the ambulances, but also the, the engines.
So it depends on the vehicle. So all of our engines do have epinephrine. So they're fully full ALS vehicles. The limited is basically when they're carrying like an albuterol treatment and those, just a small few minor medications. Or D fifty, right? But our engines do have that epinephrine. They have a full medication drug box in there.
Okay, that's good to know. I just, I'm the parent of a, of a, an adult child now who has food allergies. And as you probably know, food allergies have been increasing and. It's really important for those families to know that we're equipped with, with epinephrine. So thank you for that. And I also was wondering. On the page that you had with the emergency preparedness overview. Could you just touch briefly on the, on the CRT, C E R T volunteer program and what that is?
So our CERT volunteers, it kind of went to the wayside for a little bit. Will was able to bring that back. So it's basically people that are interested in giving back to the community. So he trains them up and they can do anything from. They work out at the Liberty Fest, right? They help, you know, monitor the grounds. They can do traffic control. Just a numerous amount of things, you know, when we open the vaccination site, we can have them out there to, you know, give direction to people, give information to people. So there's really a volunteer program that they're trained up in the public safety side of things to make sure that. You know, our, our citizens have it, have a input into the, into the public safety and are able to help out the community. So.
Hey, Kate, that was, that was a group who helped us when the pandemic first started to call all of the seniors in our database. So we had like eight of them come in and they helped us. They called like a hundred people each. They did a really good job. So they do all kinds of stuff.
I think you're on mute, Amory. Sorry. Thank you. It's going to be interesting to, to look at some of these numbers when the census numbers comes back. And you're talking about like the comparative analysis. It's also interesting to note that. Most of the cities and townships will use transport except for like cities like Ann Arbor, which are private. So what, what is the difference between that? Why do you think Ann Arbor would choose more to transport private versus someone like us?
Well, I can tell you that pretty much all of Ann Arbor uses Sharon Valley. So there's not. Any fire department that I know of in Washtenaw County, or Washtenaw County that transport their own. HVA's had a, a, I say a stronghold, but anyway, they, they've done all the transports. For Washtenaw County for as long as I can remember. And that's kind of where, where the fire service went out there was not transporting.
Okay. And I, I know that right now, like LA County, because of COVID, they're being asked, their firefighters are being asked to make decisions when they go to people's homes. To not transport so that the emergency rooms don't get filled. And that's, that's very scary and very dangerous thing to think about. You know, that we would have to get to that point, but I know LA County is, so hopefully we won't get there in Michigan.
I pray that our, our medical board never makes that or has us put, put that decision on us, right? Because. We're not doctors, right? And, and we, we are not. You know, the almighty, right? We don't get to decide who, who gets transported and who gets treatment and who doesn't. We, we transport every single person and it makes it very simple for us. They have a right to be transported and we, we transport them. And I understand in a pandemic, it can be very difficult, but. It's, it's not in a position that I would want any further to be put into.
Right. That's right.
One of the benefits of Michigan's pause, making our numbers not as explosive as you're seeing in other community, other states that, that, that. Did not implement a pause, right? Or you're seeing the hospital capacity just explode. Thank, thank God we are where we are right now, which is a weird statement to say in and of itself.
Well, that's very true. Any other questions?
Over the census, you know, coming that the new census coming. The final number is coming out. So will you, do you think you'll have? What is the staffing capacity now and? Do you need more people than, are you, are you? Do you need more people now? I. I'm sorry if I missed through your staffing. You're giving staffing numbers there.
Well, to be honest with you, if you would have asked me that question last year, I would have said, yes, we need more people, right? With this year, with the decrease in numbers because of the COVID, it's really something that I want to evaluate over the next year. To make sure that we're going to continue on a path of, you know, increasing call volume as I've seen my entire career. With that being said. Our personnel do more than any other personnel really around, right? They, they are busy. They continue to work hard. And with the deputy chief and myself re aligning how we respond out and how we're on these. Apparatus, I think that that will, time will tell. But going back to the accreditation, right? They don't want to see one person going out on an apparatus. And, and back to Kate's point, right? We have an, an engine that's going to be responding out to a medical run for a child with an allergic. We're allergic reaction to food with one paramedic on it and trying to, you know, start an IV, start epinephrine. Those are the considerations that we're looking at, right? Both the union and myself, we agree that we don't want one person going out on an apparatus. But with that being said, we have to plan for what's happening now and, and in the future. And we'll continue to evaluate that and we'll continue to look at that. So. Well, I want to say we're, we're good with staffing. I don't want to say that. Do I want to say that we're going to evaluate it and, and I will come back with something? Just like the fire station or anything else, I will absolutely do that and you guys will know exactly where we stand.
And also, you know, you have to measure is, we have a lot of assisted living facilities, which we don't have a graph here. I know we've seen it in the past where that's where a lot of our runs are also. So we know we're getting more. So is that, is that going to increase it? So that has to be taken into consideration. Any other questions? All right. And we'll probably, I mean, this is another area to do a study session on, which we do deeper depth dive. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Stockline. Okay.
Have a good day.
You too. Okay. Our next person up is Director Trumble on finance, budget and IT. Wendy, did you have a slide you wanted to put up? Anything or did you?
I do. I have a PowerPoint. I would like to.
Thank you.
I guess I need to get my glasses on here. Okay. Can everybody see my, my screen?
We can. Yes.
Thank you. Um, so thanks for taking the time and I know it's been a long morning for you. So I'll try to make. Finance as interesting as finance can possibly be. So overall. So our org chart, we have about nineteen members of the finance and budget departments, including our IT department. So, you know. Us by nature, we're mostly an internal service. Department. We assist all the departments in the township for finance needs, IT needs. We have some external customers because we do oversee the community development block grant program. So we do have some. External customers that we help, but we're mostly pretty busy with the day to day operations of keeping the finances moving within the township. So I'm going to start with our finance department and then I'm going to switch over into our IT department roles, but. So finance department responsibilities, I wanted to give you an overview of kind of what a year and a, and a day looks like, I guess, in the, in the IT department. So. We prepare the annual budget for the township. We work in coordination with the supervisor on that. And so as we prepare the township, or prepare the budget and we present the budget to the board. That is after it has been scrubbed by all the departments. What happens is finance starts entering all the people costs, the personnel costs based on the staffing that's out there. It gets sent out to the departments for their department individual entry for non-personnel related costs. Then it comes back to finance and we scrub it down and we look at it and compare it to the previous. Three years actuals of what we spent and if it's gone up significantly, we talked to the departments about why it's gone up. We take it to the supervisor for the supervisor to review it all and then we present it to the board. We have historically done multi-year budgeting. So with that, typically by now, at this point in time, we would have already had the twenty twos. Budget done. So we're in the twenty one year. The board approved the twenty one budget in November. You can amend the budget throughout the year depending on what's going on. But typically what we do is. As we're approving the subsequent years budget, so typically what would happen in November. Night, excuse me, of twenty, we would be adopting the twenty one budget, asking the board to adopt that and accept the twenty two budget. So just to, just so we can have a multi-year budget, so we can see what's on the horizon. And then the subsequent year, we'd be doing the twenty three budget with COVID and the changing of the board with the election coming up. The twenty two budget was pushed out a little bit. We're going to be looking to present that to the board. I think at the end of February is the timing that we're looking at at this point in time to get back on track, to have twenty twos done. And then the summer we'll get back on track and get the twenty three budget started. We also are responsible for the annual financial statement audit. So we've had, we're pretty proud of the fact that we have received the. Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for twenty eight consecutive years. It's kind of the finance accreditation process, if you will. It includes a seventy. Number checklist that we have to go through to make sure that, you know, we're being transparent with the financial statements. We're in compliance with all of the accounting rules. And, and just making sure that we have solid controls in place. So we're, we're pretty proud of that. Our audits for the last. Eight years since I've been here, I think they've only had a handful of journal entries that they have found where. Something would have had to been adjusted at audit time, which is a pretty amazing feat. When you look at that from most communities audits, especially for a community our size, so we're really proud about that. Our, our team works really hard. To make sure our financial statements are appropriate and can be relied upon all throughout the year. Along with that annual financial statement audit, we, when necessary, we have the audit of the federal awards. So. The federal government requires if you receive awards of more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a year, that your. Federal awards are reviewed to make sure you're complying with those rules. We definitely will have one of those this year. We've received a lot of grants this year related to COVID. I think we got in the neighborhood of two million dollars alone, just from the state of Michigan for police and fire payroll. Reimbursement. So, so we're going to have it. We will have a federal audit this year. On a daily basis, we are maintaining the general ledger. Finance department reconciles the bank statements monthly. That is, that's required control. And that's a good way to make sure everything is being appropriately recorded in the financial statements. And then the other asset liability accounts that we have, we reconcile throughout the year, depending on the account. If it's a small account that doesn't have much activity, we might not do much with that for a year to make sure it's appropriate. Some of them, because there's a lot of activity, we reconcile quarterly. Sometimes it's monthly. It just depends on the account. Also, on a quarterly basis, we review the budget to actual statements and make sure we're meeting our budget. And if we have to make budget adjustments, we bring those to the board. Biannually, we usually bring those through in August as a big lump sum. If individual departments have budget, budget adjustments needed, they will bring those forth at board meetings through an RBA. We also process payroll bi-weekly. I believe we have on any given week about a thousand paychecks we're doing, depending on between full-time and part-time staff. We have all the related payroll tax returns that we have to file. We have to get all that, the taxes withheld to the related taxing units, whether it be the federal government, the state government, we have to remit all of the pension liabilities that we withhold from the paychecks. Anybody who has any garnishments, we have to make sure those get paid to the appropriate, the appropriate person as well. And then we're in the process right now of getting all of our year end W2's ready to go. Those are required to be out by January 31st. We also have to approve all the purchase orders. So in 2020, that was just under 2,800 purchase orders. We process all of the check runs. This year it included approximately 11,700 invoices, which resulted in 6,100 checks and EFTs during 2020. So if we get multiple invoices on for one check run, we'll, we'll combine those and just write one check for those. We want to make sure that we're in compliance with the purchasing card policy. There's a number of people in the township who have credit cards, we call them P cards. We make sure that they're in compliance with the purchasing rules on those. We also administer the gas cards in all of our vehicles. We filed our year end 1099s, nines that are required to be filed as well. We oversee the debt administration to make sure all of outstanding debts paid on time. We are maintaining financial compliance with the capital improvement program. We also record all of the asset acquisitions and disposals in the general ledger associated with that. We oversee the pension and retiree healthcare liability administration. I have a slide on that just to kind of show you where that liability is on a couple of sides. And I talked about that we oversee the community development block grant program as well. We assist municipal services department in compiling the water and sewer rate for the upcoming year that we recommend to the board. Finance prepares what the property tax rate is going to be based on the budget that the board has decided to move forward with. So we prepare those forms and get, bring that to the board for approval. Get the appropriate signatures and send that on to the county. We manage the financial management system and our financial management system includes the purchasing payroll accounts payable, fixed assets, project accounting, revenue collection, utility billing, utility billing and human resources. So it's a pretty robust system. We also manage a timekeeping system that's, we just upgraded from a previous version of Kronos to a more, a new one. It's, I'm pretty excited about this new one. It gives, it's in the cloud. It allows people to prepare time cards from their mobile device. We're working on that and from home. So when there's people who have issues with their time cards, they don't have to be on premise to, to fix that. So it's, it's nice. Finance is also part of the negotiation team with the unions. And then along with the unions and, and as we're doing the multi-year budgets, we also update five-year projections just to kind of see with, depending on what strategic plans the, the board wants to go with and looking at costs and where we would end up in five years with some of the directions that we go. Included in your packet was the purchasing policy and it's, it's, you know, kind of a lengthy document, but I wanted to go over some of the highlights of that in case you haven't had an opportunity to read that yet. So the purchasing policy right now is anything that's less than, well, you need to get informal quotes for anything less than $5,000. So your response, each individual department is responsible for getting the three individual quotes from, you know, the different vendors that they deem appropriate. Once it's 5,000, they, they're required to get written quotes. And once it's over $10,000, the departments are required to put an invitation to bid out or a request for proposal on those. Now you will see occasionally that different departments will come forward with a asking for a waiver to, waiver of the purchasing policy to require a bid for various reasons. It could be because we just had a similar, we just went out to bid two years ago for this and somebody's holding their, their price is constant. Or it's a sole source. So we, we don't, we can't go out to bid because we know this is the only community or this is the only vendor that's going to be able to help. So there are those occasional requests from the board, but those do come to the board for approval. And the board has an option to grant that waiver or require them to go out to bid anyways. Anything less than $3,000 requires approval from the department director and myself. Once it gets to $3,000, it requires two of the three full-time elected officials to also approve the purchase order. And once it's over $10,000, that, that is required to go to the board of trustees for approval. So anything less than 3,000 can be approved by the, the department director and myself. Anything between 3,000 and 10,000 requires two of the three full-time electeds, including myself and the department director. And then again, anything over 10,000 requires the board of trustees to approve it as well. A couple of other highlights of the purchasing policy I wanted to touch on is the waiver of the purchasing policy in the event of an emergency. So the purchasing policy addresses the fact that sometimes things come up that we don't have time to wait for a board meeting to get approval for a purchase and it's over $10,000. So certain things like if the common ones that will happen is if a rooftop unit is no longer working and we have to get it working because there's no heat in the building. So on, in those occasions, the director, the department director will write a memo and put it together and put it in writing to myself and the township supervisor and get the approval to move forward. And then the subsequent board meeting, as soon as the next board meeting happens, this comes to the board. So the board is aware of what happens and can see the, see what, what happened. Capital items. So when the, when the board approves the annual budget, there is a listing of the capital that is requested in those budgets. We require that all of the capital items be listed out and those are presented to the board. Those capital items need to stay static unless that comes to approval for the supervisor and myself to allow that to be spent on something other than what was in the budget. If it comes to over $10,000, we require that to go to the board for approval. But if it's under $10,000 on the supervisor and myself, along with the department director can approve those changes. But we do want the capital items to remain static through the year to the extent possible. Again, things happen where some things come up that take priority and then, and then the department directors make those requests. There are some exemptions from the purchasing policy that we don't have coming to the board and it's things such as utility payments. You know, we have to pay our DTE bills when they come up, our water bills, our insurance bills, the legal services, the accounting and auditing services, the post, post office, if we need to buy, you know, stamps, stamps, it's a big machine, but you know, postage, we need to buy that. And a few other items, they're all listed out there in the purchasing policy, but I wanted to point that out to you. We talked a little bit about the different procurement methods, the quotes versus bids. And lastly, in the purchasing policy, you'll notice at the end of it, they talks about federal procurement rules. And there, that is a requirement of the federal government that we address the federal procurement rules. Ours at the township are more restrictive than what the federal government requires. So even though the federal, I, I believe the federal government doesn't require any bidding unless the purchase is over $25,000. Well, Canton's rule is $10,000. So because ours is more restrictive, we need to use our rule. We can't waive that and just go with the 25,000. So we added this, that to our purchasing policy to make sure we're in compliance with all of the grant rules. But again, our, our rules are more restrictive than what the federal governments are. So we stick with ours. This is always a fun one to talk about. And in the purchasing policy is a listing of unlawful expenditures. These unlawful expenditures are defined by the state of Michigan, not by the township. So through various court acts or various laws, specific laws, it talks about some things that we can and cannot spend taxpayer funds on. So a few of the items, if you look kind of the, the D, starting with D, donations of goods, cash or goods to churches or to improve church property, that's an illegal expenditure. Same thing for a private ambulance or EMS service, that would be a donation. So if, you know, the other communities that do that, that's part of the service. It's not a donation. That's, they're paying for the service. Community organizations, you can't make donations to any not-for-profit or veterans. We cannot donate. That's an illegal expenditure. The scouts, big brothers, big sisters, we can't donate. We cannot contribute towards illegal expenses for lawsuits for taxpayers. We can't even buy flowers for the sick or departed. We can't pay per diem payments or mileage to officials to and from the residents to the township hall or meetings of the board, office picnics. So we can't have an office-wide picnic for our staff, office refreshments. It gets down to the specific that we are not allowed to buy coffee for our staff with township dollars. Unless it's for a public purpose. So if you're having a meeting where the public's invited or there's a public meeting, you can do that. You can also have some if there's, you know, a meeting, a business meeting, but we cannot provide them specifically for our staff. Presents to officials, we cannot do, we cannot give retirement gifts or employee gifts. We cannot give retroactive pay increases to any of our staff unless excluding those that are subject to act 312 arbitration and private roads. And, and probably some of you are aware of that, that when we have done special assessment districts for public roads, we can issue a tax exempt, or we can do a, we can put our full faith behind it, but the private roads is a different interest rate. So you've probably noticed that in the past. This was also in your, in your packet, the annual overview. I kind of wanted to show the big highlights of the busy times for us. So, you know, we've got the beginning of the year right now. We approve payroll. We ask the departments to have their payroll approved by 10:00 AM every other Monday. We will have our, in February, we will have our fourth quarter budget meeting for, to kind of see where 2020 ended up. We should have the majority of our expenses in invoices coming in that were for services rendered in December. We have to book back to December. So we typically lag like a month or so, just to make sure we get everything booked back that we can to the correct year. In February, we take a look at the water and sewer rates. Finance is typically going through that and trying to help establish what rate we're going to propose to the board moving forward. This year, mid to end February is when we're planning on having a study session for the 2022 budget. Mid-March is when we start our annual audit. Between March and April is when we typically talk to the board about the water and sewer rates. And we also have a public forum that we prepare for the public to ask any questions that they have. And then in May, we'll have our first quarter budget meeting, first quarter of 21. We typically mid-June present the audit results to the board. The audit, well, they used to come onsite before COVID. Now last year was our first year we had to do it remote. It usually takes, they're usually on premise for three to four weeks trying to wrap up our audit. We have a big community. It takes them a while. And then by the time it goes through their standards departments and they ask some open questions and getting all the paperwork done, it's typically not ready until the end of May or so. So we usually end up presenting it mid-June. This year in mid-July, we will plan on having the 2023 budget open for department entry. Then we have, you know, it's another quarterly meeting. We set the solid waste collection fee. That is due to the treasures department. So they can get it on the property tax bills. We set that at the beginning of September as we do the property tax mileage rate. And then in the middle to end of October, we'll have a study session for the 2022 budget changes that we're going to ask the board to adopt in November. And then the 2023 budget that we will have just been working on. And we'll ask the board to actually adopt that in November. This is a listing of all of the outstanding debt. We talked about finance administers, the debt. So this is through December 31st of 2020. This top table up here, you know, look at what I'm looking at right here. This top table here shows that their governmental funds currently has about $22.3 million of bonds outstanding at the end of the year. Has the maturity dates listed and what the debt is for. So this initial debt was issued in 2011. This is the Sheldon Center connector, which went between Canton Center and Sheldon Road. When we paved that road, there's about $375,000 outstanding on that bond. That will be paid off in 23. This $5.5 million, this is a 2003 debt that was, well, this issue was initially issued in 2003. It'll be paid off in 2023 and it had to do with village theaters when we were doing the construction of Village Three Theater and administrative, the administration building debt. We have a couple special assessment bonds outstanding, 185,000. This is for the Lexington subdivision and 250,000 for Weathersfield Road. These two are paid for by those residents. They're on our books. We bill the commune, those homeowners, homeowners in those associations. And then they give us the money and we pay the debt. So that's not really coming out of general fund dollars. That's coming from the homeowners. We just issued the debt on their behalf. Back in 2012, there was an energy audit, an energy project that was done, then we issued four, four, $4.4 million. At the end of 2020, we still owe $2.5 million that will be paid off in 27. And lastly, this is the bond issue that we just did in October. This previous October issued 13. We issued $13.4 million. What we had requested was actually $16 million, but because of the bonds were purchased actually at a premium, the people who were purchasing bonds gave us money to borrow money from us. So we ended up with $15 million, but we only owe back $13 million. These next, and these are paid for out of the general fund, general government funds, not business type. So these are, this would be like our general fund, our police fund, if there's anything on there, our community center fund and so on and so forth. This, these next three, where we owe $16.8 million. These first two are golf course leases. So it's carts and mowers that we purchased under a capital lease. So this top one's going to expire in for 77. The 77,000, this is the wrong maturity date. That's actually going to mature in 21, right here. And then this next one, this 2020 capital lease is going to expire in 24. So this date is wrong on this top line. That should, that should have actually been 2020. And this last one is for $16.5 million is some debt for when we built the water tower that we had issued, when we built the water tower over there and off of Warren Road, Joy Road. And then some outstanding debt that we had from when we issued some debt years ago with Watuwa. So that will be paid off in 2027. This slide is showing our outstanding legacy cost for pension. So the actual last valuation that we have received is 2019. So if you look at this line right here. I didn't mean to do that. Oh, I'm going the wrong way. How do I get back? Oh shoot, that didn't work. Hold on. Okay. Can you see it back again? Back to pension?
Yes.
Thank you. As of 19, our unfunded pension liability, and this is all of our, our defined benefit pensions and our hybrid pensions that we have outstanding at the, and this is for all of the township, all divisions. So police, fire, our merit employees, our ASME employees, our TPOM, this is everybody. The unfunded liability at the end of 2019 was $48 million. So we're 67% funded. Beginning in 2020, we won't get the 2020 valuation until June. That's typically when every year MERS will send us our valuations. But they did give us in the previous valuation, a projection of where they believe the unfunded liabilities are going to go. So they believe next this at the So they believe next, at the end of this, next year, our unfunded liability is actually going to jump up to $52 million. And that's because they had changed some of their assumptions at MERS. People are living longer. So that's that assumption change. So you can see that it's, they're expecting it to stay pretty flat between the '20 and '21 valuation year and the '22 valuation year. And then that looks like it's going to go down. But as you can see, what they're saying, our required contributions are going to go up pretty drastically each year. So it's going to go up by about 10% between '21 and '22. So we should expect when we're approving the budgets for it to go up by 10% per year, at least. You can also notice, if you look at it, every year, our assets have been going up about 4 million. So here it went up 4 million, here it went up 2 million. And in '19, that assets actually went up $12 million. We, as the township, actually ended up not only paying what the estimated required contribution was, we, we paid an additional $8.9 million to try to pre-fund some of that liability. So as you can see, it's a good thing that we did that because we're expecting the liability to go up. And if the assets didn't go up, our funded percentage would have gone down significantly. See if I can get the next slide here. Okay. So next, here's our outstanding legacy cost for our OPEB, which is our, everything else, it's a legacy cost for retirement, except for pension. So this is healthcare. This is dental for people who get it. This would be life insurance if people are eligible for life insurance. So our valuation year, our last valuation year that we received was in 2018. These are required biannually. So we are in the process of hiring the actuary to move forward with our 2020 valuation. So we should have updated numbers soon. But at the end of '18, our liability was, our unfunded liability was $35 million. So we are about 33% funded. And our estimated, this says annual required employer contribution for here, that $6.8 million, that is actually for two years because the valuation was two years. In their valuation report, though, we do ask for a summary of if we pre-fund, when do we think we're going to be fully funded? So we ask them to assume that we're going to pay an additional $1 million a year of pre-funding into our plan. Just for me to back up a little bit, pension is required to be funded, pre-funded on an annual basis. OPEB is not. So we have to fund every year, every month into our pension system to be in compliance with state law. However, the state law does not require you to pre-fund the medical costs. So when we say with these estimated annual required, or estimated annual required employer contribution, that's really just what they're estimating for healthcare costs for our current retirees. However, if we pay an additional million dollars per year, they're showing that, you know, at the end of '26, our contribution would be about 52% funded. But and based on this assumption, if we continue down that path of paying an additional million dollars a year, our actuary estimated that we would be fully funded in 2036. So that's still another 15 years out, but it's progress. We are in compliance with all the state laws as far as when they want to, when they want to take a look at, we have annual reporting that we have to do to the state of Michigan for the status of our pension funding and our OPEB funding. And right now, we are in compliance with all of those requirements as far as not being in fiscal distress. Moving on to our IT department. So IT manages all of the township computers. They maintain all the servers. They maintain all of the on-premise applications. And currently we have over 50 on-premise applications. They respond to the technology issues and requests. So problems when they come up, if somebody is having technology difficulties, they call the, they call the help desk, the IT department, and they respond to that. In 2020, there was 2,600 tickets that were entered into the system for help desk problems. So you think about that, if there's, you know, 260 workdays a year that IT is working without holidays, they, they're getting about 10 a day. And that's just the ones that get put into the system. Other people make phone calls and they don't hit the system. So our IT department's pretty overwhelmed with resolving issues that come up. They maintain the phone system. They are responsible for all the mobile phones and they are responsible for all of the copy machines as well. So IT, right now, just to give you some key stats that we have, that means based on what I told you, they're responsible for over 400 computers that are on the network. They've got 10 physical servers that they are responsible for, 61 virtual servers, 82 printers. There's 60 Rico copiers and printers in the township that they manage. There's also four network storage servers. They help the clerks department with the 54 election laptops. There's 32 non-network computers. So those that aren't actually hooked up to our system, 179 cell phones, 451 desk phones. Currently, they're managing the 65 wireless access points we have at the township, five firewalls, and then we've got about five, just under 600 current emails accounts that we have in Office 365 that they manage. This last year, and moving forward, some of the IT projects that we've been working on is CityView Upgrade. And CityView, I imagine Director Smith talked about this in his presentation, is that, is a software that we use for all of the permitting. There needed to be some cleanup in that software. It was a pretty big project this year and they, Devin and our IT department did a really nice job trying to clean that up and get the, get the program operating more smoothly. Also to allow people to submit plans online. We had our Chronos upgrade. I spoke on that a little bit. We had our Tyler and CityWorks integration for our water billing work order. So if you recall, when I said our management system looks, is in charge of the, or uses the utility management. So that's our water billing. When customers call down into water billing to say, there's something wrong with my meter, they let the DPW workers know to go out and do, go to his house to look at a repair. Before, that was a pretty manual process. This last year, we worked to integrate two different applications to be able to talk to each other. So there, it could be less manual. So that was a pretty significant project to get done. Our township's internets, for those of you who know what the source is, that is not being supported currently. So we are in the process of upgrading that to make sure we have a good internet to provide information to our employees. This last year has been very significant. You know, I can't speak enough about our IT department and trying to get all of the people ready to work remotely, which was, you know, not necessarily expected. So that was a pretty significant undertaking. Along with that same weekend that they were in the process of getting all of the computers ready to go, then our server crashed. So they've been very, very busy trying to get that back up. We have been going through, I mentioned before, there was the 50 applications that we currently, over 50 applications that we have. Our applications manager has been meeting and doing an applications audit, meeting with the different staff to try to find out where there's redundancies, where we might have similar applications that can do the same thing to try to reduce the number of applications that we have. That's not real quick. We've got regular software updates, you know, just when the, there's items that are on our server, not in the cloud. They have to make sure all those are getting upgraded. And currently, and I believe Director Smith probably talked about this, about a plan review technology upgrade in 2021 that they're working through. Over the holidays, just to give you a little bit of idea of some of the stuff that keeps Joe up at night, our IT manager. Over the holidays, there was 22 campaign attacks on our system trying to access our network. So that was within that 22 campaign attack, there was 20, over 20,000 attempts to actually gain access to our files. So think about, over about a 10-day period over the holidays, there was 20,000 attempts to get it into our network. You know, Joe's guess at this point in time is that they're trying to create an environment to overwhelm our internet and to destabilize our server to allow additional vulnerabilities in it to, to get it data. They're all thwarted. The countries of origin that Joe can go in and see, some of them were India, Pakistan, Afghanistan, Ukraine, Laos, Vietnam, China, Russia, Brazil, and Argentina. So Joe has the ability to go in and see from their IP address, address of who's trying to attack the system, where, where the attacks are coming from. And he's able to shut down basically that IP address from a certain number and say, you're not getting in our system. So they can no longer even try to attack it. So it's a bunch of work for Joe to do. Obviously, he didn't try to do it for 20,000 people, 20,000 attacks, but he was able to get into the system and look at that. Some of the IT department needs that Joe and IT specifically is looking at is the enhanced security. So we want to make sure our employees understand the phishing. Like if somebody clicks on the wrong email, that can basically create a vulnerability into our system. We had purchased some software that allows a testing of the phishing to find out where some additional employee education is. So Joe's already sent a email out to all the staff, just, just as an initial email to say who, who clicks on it the first time before education. How, how are we as an organization to, as far as vulnerabilities for phishing attacks? Also, we need to upgrade our existing firewalls. That was budgeted to occur, I believe it was budgeted to occur in 2020, but we're going to be putting that into 2021. Our firewalls are at the end of their useful life. And if we don't update them, some of these, you know, campaigns like these attacks that are coming in could actually get through. So it's very important that we get our firewalls upgraded. We also need to get a robust disaster recovery plan in place for the township. But that's going to take a little bit of extra work because we need to have a business analysis of how departments are currently operating and what makes sense for the future. So if we are currently maintaining everything in our internal servers and a lot of our applications are currently on internal servers and not in the cloud, that impacts how we need to back up our data to get things back up and running. So if we need extra, extra servers, storage to make sure we're safe, we'll have to purchase those. And that would have to be part of a disaster recovery plan. But if we start moving more cloud-based, it's going to change the way IT would be able to get all of our systems back up and running in the event of a disaster. So that's something that is very important from an IT perspective that we're moving forward on. We're also looking at the possible expanded use of SharePoint. I know for the board packets, we're looking to do use SharePoint, which it'll help, should help everybody as far as the board members and internal staff who are trying to get the board packets together. It's kind of our first stab at using the SharePoint. Other departments' IT needs. So I believe you heard most of the other departments talk about where some of their IT needs are. We have what's called the IT steering committee, which over COVID, we kind of lost sight of it, but we need to get back together. As the priorities come up for the different departments, there's a steering committee that's made up of all of the directors, the IT managers, and we meet to talk about what are the, what are the needs for the township? Because there's only so many hours in a day, so many budget dollars available right now. So where do we spend our focus? So we can help prioritize which projects we need to look, you know, which, which projects need to come first before the other projects? So we can kind of have a five-year plan on that. So there is that committee that we meet. Some of the things, some of the consistent township-wide needs that I'm aware of. A lot of departments are required, who don't have dual monitors right now, want dual monitors and larger monitors. So that's something that we might want to look at. Some, so I'm going to skip to the laptops and desktops. The, kind of the theory in the past is that, you know, we're public serving, we, we face the public and we need most employees work here. So laptops are more expensive than desktops. So most of our employees have desktops. Well, now that we're doing so many Zoom meetings, if somebody has a desktop and we're doing a Zoom and they're on-premise, they can't, you can't see them because there's no microphone or webcam. So we need to start upgrading everybody's microphone, getting people microphones and webcams. And we also have to decide as a township, what direction we want to have. Do we want to have our employees more mobile? And what, who those employees might be. And lastly, GIs, every department has talked about needing, wanting more GIs capabilities on the computer, just to be able to use the mappings, the maps that we have available to us. Okay, I'm sorry. I know it took my time. I was trying to talk. Joe is on the line too. I know. I think he is. He said he was on as a participant. If there's questions specifically for IT, I'm sure that Joe could have, could help with those, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Any questions? And obviously, we can have a study session on IT needs also. And after we look at our boards and strategy also. Nothing or anything on finance? We're having a study session on that coming up. Okay. All right, great. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Wendy, for calling in. Thanks. And that's ceased. So that would be Michael's next, our clerk secretist, talking about the clerk's office.
All right. Hello, everybody. Let me share my screen here. Got a little PowerPoint presentation. If I do that, is everyone, is it a full screen?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Tanya. Okay. So the Canton Township Clerk's Office. We have our own kind of internal mission or vision statement, which is the Clerk's Office connects people to their government. And we developed that motto last, I'm sorry, in 2019, when we were trying to create a culture inside our department to the best that we could. And we asked fundamentally, what is the role of clerk's office? And it is that we take input from the residents, from the citizens, from the voters, through the form of elections. And then we provide output to them in the form of public information through FOIA, through records requests, through publications, postings and all of that. So we give them all of the legal information that are required and they give us the legitimacy to function as a township, right? Because of the notion of popular sovereignty. All of us exist and the entire foundation, what we just discussed, exists solely because the voters have allowed it to. So that's our motto. The Clerk's Office connects people to their government. Now, here's a fairly large little paragraph that kind of goes over some of the statutory items that was discussed in depth when Corporation Council did their presentation of the Township Act. So I will skip through a number of those things. The financial operations portion of that has been predominantly delegated to the finance and budget department. So that is something much like assessing is not done by the supervisor. I don't keep the chart of accounts, right? That is something that falls under, has been delegated under to Director Trumbull, as you just learned. I don't send POs or approve POs to the Treasury for issuing of checks. That's something that's also done by finance as well. But I do conduct the elections. I am obviously a voting member of the Township Board of Trustees. So I'm a legislator, just like the supervisor, just like the treasurer, but also a member of the executive branch as well. We post legal notices and I subscribe the minutes because I am the secretary to the Board of Trustees. I chair the Board of Election Commissioners, which is determined by our ordinance. And I, I'm sorry, no, that's determined by state law. And then I am, I am secretary to the board, to the Board of Ethics. And that's by our ordinance. The Clerk's Office is committed to maintaining the integrity of government in Canton Township and ensuring an informed citizenry by providing transparent access to township government through open and accessible meetings and accurate recording of township board proceedings, by protecting and preserving public documents and records through the conduct of fair and democratic elections and by providing excellent service to the public. So these are our values that we decided as a group inside our department. Our first and most important value, and I love this one because it's externally facing, is relevance. We want to provide meaningful service and evolve to meet the changing needs of our community. So we define our success by whether or not we are doing what, we are providing a service that the public actually wants, which is hard, I think, in a lot of bureaucracies. We become self-centered and self-focused. And, and I know I've, I've experienced that in dealing with some other large organizations where I'm an inconvenience to their day as opposed to the reason for their day. Access is our second most important value. We Access is our second most important value we decided, which is that we want to have open interaction in a welcoming manner so that everyone feels respected. And access here is from a technology, but it's also from an accessibility um measure as well. We do everything we can to make sure that people get the information in a usable format based on their needs and their abilities. Um, we have varying degrees of technological needs, physical ability in the township, and so we really focus on that. And then teamwork is our third and final goal, which is about, um, we will work internally as a team, leveraging our individual differences to achieve common goals. Um, and also as a teamwork, as an internal customer with other departments, and then teamwork with residents, right? It's their information. We have custody of it. We will work with them to get them access to the information that belongs to them. Um, and so that's our fundamentally, our fundamental philosophy and how we run the clerk's office. I have two divisions, if you will, that fall under the clerk's uh department. Uh, the first would be, in this instance, elections. And this, as I said before, is how citizens provide input into Canton Township. Uh, the budget account for this is budget is the account 262. We oversee an elections division with a budget that fluctuates from year to year due to the demand of our elections. This year for 2021, if you look at that little graph right there, you will see that we have one election budgeted, and that is um, or anticipated, rather, and our budget um is $163,000. Now, last year, we, I don't have a final budget because we're still working on getting all that stuff um done. But we had three elections, so our amended budget was just over $500,000. So imagine managing a department that it fluctuates from year to year with that much irregularity. And then in 2018, when we know we had a fairly large gubernatorial election, we had, we realized two elections. So our actual budget in 2018 was 327,000, a little over that. So that kind of gives you an idea of of kind of what happens and what what's going on in those years. Uh, some years, 2017, for example, we took on uh brand-new laptops. We took on a lot of additional equipment um to modernize with the change in how we're going to, how we conduct elections. So that, while it was an off year, we had no elections, we still had a pretty decent-sized elections budget. So it's not always determined on the uh election itself. Additionally, the cost of elections has increased because voting behavior has changed, both due to changes in law, also a global pandemic. Um, also, people, it's more convenient to vote at home. So that's a, but it's more costly. Comparisons, if you want to look at ballot comparisons, um, this last year, we had a presidential election. You see that on Election Day, we had 16,189 voters show up, substantially smaller than 2016, where only 34th, where 34,342 voters showed up. But then looking at the voting by mail, it went from 14,220 absentee ballots to 41,416. That's a sizable change, both an increase in the number of voters over the last presidential election, but also a change in the method from which they vote. Additionally, with the change, we had uh under Michigan election law, there used to be a close of registration, 30 days, 30 days, a whole month prior to an election. If you weren't registered, you were unable or ineligible to vote in that election. That law was absolutely destroyed. Now there is same-day um and election-day voter registration. As long as you can meet certain requirements, you can register to vote on Election Day. So essentially, what's what's happened is the role of our elections division has changed pretty substantially. Instead of be predominantly throwing a party for 34,000 people to vote in a local school or church near their home or some type of government building, and then slowly processing 14,000 ballots by mail, we have turned into um a voter registration center on Election Day and in the immediate days leading up to. We have turned into a very large processing center for voting by mail, and we are still conducting um and and troubleshooting and servicing those same 40 locations out out in the community. And we are also a voting center. If you acquire a ballot on Election Day, you can vote it in a, in a booth at Township Hall. So our role, when we went from having essentially one role to one or 1.25 roles, we now have four full-time challenging roles. Uh, so I have seen a lot of change in the one time, in the one term that I have been clerk. It's a fascinating time to be involved in elections. One of the beautiful things, we had a metric that we use, we have metrics that we used um to determine wait time. Uh, the average wait time at the Canton Clerk's Office was reported at under five minutes on a typical day. We both had a document we used to track residents, so when they would come in to register to vote or to get a ballot themselves. And this is under COVID restrictions, right? We are limiting the amount of the capacity in the building. We were still able to meet an average, an average of five minutes a day um for your resident to come in, acquire a ballot. Uh, now for them to vote the ballot, that's that's on them, right? If they voted it here, that could have taken a half hour. We don't care. Our measurement was how long to get them a ballot in their hands. Um, and election challengers, this is something that was new this cycle because of the country that we live in now. Um, there were election challengers there observing the process, and at many times, they observed no line. Now, we use that data from those election challengers who were located all around the state of Michigan. And so the statewide average wait times was 30 minutes, and there were many reports of over one to two hours for a resident to come into a clerk's office in that 40-day window prior to an election to obtain a ballot and um, or to register to vote and get a ballot. So we pride ourselves in delivering that relevant service, right? We we want to be accessible and we want to be relevant, and um I think we were able to achieve that this cycle. Okay, now, when you're looking at turnout overall, so forgetting about the method of which the people turned out, you look at 2016, 72% of voters turned out, and there were only 69,000 voters. 2020, 77% of voters turned out, and there was 75,000 voters. So a sizable, sizable increase. And beautifully enough, it's symbolically representative of last year being the 100-year anniversary, uh, woman's right to vote. So that was awesome to see. Registration, I kind of went over that. This year, we registered almost 10,000 residents. And I say we, one of the largest changes was the automatic voter registration that acquired through Motor Voter at the Secretary of State, which is the number-one uh gate of entry for a registered voter. Most of the new registrations were through the Secretary of State's office, but Canton Township voter rolls increased um by a sizable, a sizable amount. Um, so that was something that we had never dealt with before in previous elections. In 2016, I remember uh then Clerk Terry Bennett had reported that we had registered 2,000 new voters in that one year, which was a record year. So for 10,000 new voters to be registered, that is a smash of the previous record of 2,000 in one year. It's always highest in a presidential year because the campaigns participate in voter registration drives, and they are probably the largest organizations when it comes to mobilizing and registering voters. But the Secretary of State's office, because of Prop. 183, which passed in 2018, isn't, you know, they they just, um, they 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 took the crown, if you will, on that. Now, the second, the second kind of division or budget that we have in the clerk's office is the clerk's office itself. And this is how citizens receive the information from Canton Township. This is the 215 account. The clerk's office oversees a clerk's division with a budget that remains relatively stable. So in 2021, our budget is as present, as approved or as amended is 627,013. Now, let's talk about what's in that, because everyone knows about the voting, but then everyone else says, what does the clerk do? Nobody knows what the clerk does. Uh, this is the up-to-date organizational chart for my office. You will see that all of the relevant electoral and legal authority stems from the office of the clerk through the Charter Township Act. I do have a deputy clerk who is also classified as an assistant clerk. It's a dual-title individual. There are six full-time employees, and we have one continuing part-time employee, somebody who works a half, essentially a half-work week. Everybody in my, everyone in my office has been certified by the Bureau of Elections. We do require everyone to become a notary. Both of those requirements are professional delegations that were created under, in the last four years. They are not historically something that we have required of that staff. But for a, an internal and an external customer service, a measurement, that is something that we, that we do require. My office does provide notaries. We had, we have in the past provided them free of charge. We increased the fee to $5. Since the election, um, both the supervisor, myself, and treasurer um have decided to eliminate the $5 receipt under the philosophy that taxpayers paid for our notaries uh when they paid their taxes. And so providing that extra financial gates to an individual is like um, in a sense, you know, hitting, going into their pocket twice. And so we thought it's minimal amount of money. It will not impact the budget in the long run. And it was, so it's something that we could definitely do um to provide more relevant and accessible service to the public. So on top of that, I have an election specialist, the clerk four, who is constantly updating the voter file, removing deceased voters as we are notified by the county that somebody has died, or as um the Department of State has removed somebody because social security, your social security has stopped. Um, they are constantly bringing people in, uh, taking in move, military and overseas ballots, updating voter registrations, updating signatures, pruning and maintaining that voter file to make sure that it's up to date within the relevant law. There's my secretary four, uh, whose job it is to uh act as like an executive assistant, if you will, uh, to myself, and also both those clerk four positions um do the routine tasks. We are, uh, one of our governing philosophies under that teamwork model is that we are doing uh cross-training. And um, so everybody has specializations, things that they work on. However, the cross-training is to allow for all of us to share some of that burden, share some of that labor, and to be able to make sure that there's no discontinuity of services depending on um somebody's health or something along those lines. We have a legal clerk whose job it is to post uh legal notices, who to publish um new ordinances in in a, in a newspaper of record when we make zoning classifications and changes. We we probably publish for the zoning, uh, the zoning board appeals, for the planning commission, all of those things when we we work with um and when we have a public hearing, like, for example, we'll have one on the 26th with our sidewalk ordinance. This is the person who would be working on helping schedule that, making sure that engineering gets those letters out, making sure that that information makes it into a newspaper uh with enough time for the publication hearing, all of those things. The licensed clerk, um their job is to issue and to manage the licenses that the clerk's office is responsible for. And well, I'll get into that in a different slide. And then the continuing part-time employee is, I think, um oftentimes kind of stereotypically seen as just the front-facing individual, but they're really the backbone of the clerk's office. This is the jack-of-all-trades. Um, and in many ways, a master of many of those trades, right? She has the ability to um to do a substantial amount of the, of this, of the same functions. Um, however, we are very mindful that we don't over, or work her outside of her class, right? But she's got a good backup, does a great amount, and um can handle the front counter quite, quite well. So that's my team right there. Uh, I wish I had thought about it like HR and made sure that I had photos of everybody and given a little brief background. That would have been fantastic. It was really, really nice. In addition to the statutory duty described earlier, clerks, um, let me get rid of this little video thing. Um, the clerk also issues licenses. The deputy clerk acts as the FOIA coordinator for the township and the Board of Trustees. We review all for all Freedom of Information Act appeals. The clerk's office oversees the mailroom for the entire administration building with two commercial-grade printers slash copiers, and then all significant records are retained in the vault in accordance with their retention schedule. Now, the clerk's office has delegated the ability to hold certain records to different departments, right? Mike Shepard in Finance, his job is to oversee the CDBG grants, and so he's got federal record retention requirements. We let him keep all the grant applications and information in his office because he's the only one who uses it. It would make, it'd be absurd for that to be held in my office. And election law, I'm sorry, not election law, but Michigan law has determined that to have custody of all documents does not require them to be in the actual physical custody of the clerk. I can delegate that. You know, so some documents on vehicles can be held at fleets. Um, FIRE can have some of their information, right? HR has personnel files. Treasury, for example, right? Treasury has a lot of documents that I should not have access to. So or have access to but not um have custody of physically. So what are the licenses we do? The first one there, topical, our little buddy, we do dog licenses, okay? Um, and not just dog licenses, but my office also licenses dog kennels and um outdoor boarding facilities. So those are kind of the three different things that we uh, that we provide licenses for. We also issue dog park memberships, but the dog park membership is something that is actually um it is maintained by leisure services, uh, but the 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 gate to 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 receive one comes through to my office. We do smoking establishments. Uh, that would be any hookah bars, hookah lounges, or cigar bars. Those would be specific business entities that are exempt from the non-smoking law that was passed in the state of Michigan. Uh, I believe Diane Slavens knows a lot about that law. That was from her time in the legislature, and I know that as a respiratory therapist, she played a large role in the passing of that law. Controversial at the time. Uh, now I don't know many people who find that very controversial. Uh, but we have a few smoking establishments in Canton Township, two hookah lounges, and we have a cigar bar that is interested in coming in to the township. And so they are exempted. We, we have a separate license because the board has determined that it's, there's a public health benefit to adding an additional level of, of kind of scrutiny. And that's come in handy in the past. We have enforced that, this board has. Uh, we also rather issue massage establishment licenses um under the same kind of philosophy as smoking establishments. Those are businesses that are entitled to operate under Michigan state law. But we had an additional level of um of scrutiny. We have solicitors licenses down there at the bottom in the middle. That's the door-to-door salespeople. Those are people who would be vending. Uh, that would be any type of food truck that's going to be non-stationary, that is going to be non-stationary, that they would get their license uh through the clerk's office. Now, we have um waived that requirement for leisure services-sponsored events, as they get their um ability to sell at leisure service events through leisure services. We we eliminated that kind of double um, that double threshold with the township. We also are the gateway for liquor licenses. Um, not if an individual wants to open up a bar and buy a liquor license off the open market, which you can do for tens of thousands of dollars. If you wanted to open up a bar in Canton Township, you would not have to deal with the Canton Clerk's Office or get a license from us. You would get a Class C liquor license from the state of Michigan. But there's what's called a quota license, and you'll learn more about this as you are on the board uh in the coming years here. Uh, the quota licenses are essentially free Class C liquor licenses that a jurisdiction is required to give approval for, for, and we can, we can give those quota licenses to somebody, and it's almost like an economic incentive. It's uh, essentially, they would get a free asset, a liquor license, that they could then open up something with, you know, it could be a bar, it could be a banquet center, it could be any number of things. Uh, but essentially, you're taking something that that maybe they would have to buy for $70,000, and you're giving it to them for $700. We get one quota license for every 1,500 residents in Canton Township. So in the next census, when these numbers come out in the next couple of weeks, we will see probably around 103,000 residents, if my math is correct. But I've never done a census before. I just like to guess at stuff like that. But that would mean, from our previous census numbers of 92,000 residents, we would be seeing up to seven new quota licenses. And um, there are people who would like a quota license. And there's a whole process we go about doing that, but they would first try to get a quota license through my office. We work with, we work with um public safety to uh issue bike licenses. This is something you can do. Um, it's like an anti-theft. Um, it's meant to discourage theft in the community. Um, you, if you bought a bike, you can get it licensed with the township, and then if at any point in time it was, it was sold, uh, we would work with any local pawn shops, any other bike resale shops to identify that bike to um get it back to you. And then ideally, if we're, if we're, if we're successful, the detective bureau would be able to find out who that person was and then bring them to justice. Um, retain the property, I think, is our, is more our concern than the actual criminal element of it. But, but that's But, but that's something that we offer as well. And then going out of business sales, state law requires anybody who is going out of business. If you advertise that you're going out of business, you must obtain a license with the local clerk. And that is, I believe it's a predatory law that I think it was a law that was passed during the Great Depression, the 1930s. People would have going out of, out of, going out of business sales like every week as a way to like move inventory and it was deceptive. And so they found a way that you actually have to, they have to go in, they have to itemize their inventory. They have to show that they're going to liquidate. They have to legitimately go out of business if they know there are legal consequences. So that's something that, that we do, that, that we don't do often. Although many of you who pay attention to the news probably know that we are going to be doing one of those ultimately soon. So those are some of the individual licenses that we do. We used to do a lot more. We did, we did an ordinance reevaluation last year with, with municipal services and public safety and corporation counsel to eliminate some of the licenses we used to do. We used to do, you know, things that we weren't really qualified to, to license, things that were already licensed by the state of Michigan and things that are still relegated, regulated by building, by zoning. So it was an additional level of scrutiny that, that was arbitrary in the previous board. Many of whom are currently on this board now voted to change that ordinance to, to eliminate some of those, some of those licenses, which makes it substantially, substantially easier. So those are some of the licenses that we currently do. Again, for Freedom of Information Act requests, we are one of the busiest FOIA coordinator in the state of Michigan. We do over 1,000 requests a year. There are two FOIA admins, one in records for all public safety records because they have to meet a Kalia standard or I'm sorry, a CJ standard. And that standard is, has changed as well become, but so there's, there's some more private information that has to be redacted from, from that. And then we have a FOIA admin on the administration side of the building as well. So that we coordinate between both of those, work with all department heads to make sure we get all the relevant information to anybody who makes a lawful request. We've done that online. We have one of the most comprehensive FOIA sites on, on the internet. We were highlighted by Detroit Public Radio. They analyzed over 300, over 300 different municipalities. They made individual requests and timed them and went over the ease of making the request, the length of time it took to fulfill the request and, and then getting out. And then the, the method in which we were able to get the information out. They found that Canton was the fastest. We also never charged them because it was ancillary. It was, it was, it was an insignificant request that did not require a lot of information. But some jurisdictions, some govern, governments will charge fees. They will, they will use every opportunity they can to charge a fee. I think because their, their philosophy is that that's their information and not the public's information, which I think is an, an inside-out interpretation of what we're supposed to do as a government. So we pride ourselves in that. That pretty much covers a substantial amount of what we do. We do provide those notary services. We do FOIA, we do legal publications, we obviously keep the minutes, we keep the township records. We've delegated all of the finance stuff to the finance department, which doesn't mean that we don't participate in the audit process a little bit more than the other trustees might. But because budget falls under supervisor, finance falls under clerk, it doesn't make sense for finance to be managed by two different elected officials. So that was delegated in the 1980s, I believe. So that's kind of the, the short end of what goes on with the clerk's office. Now supervisor, I will yield my time. I don't know if anyone has any questions. I would be more than happy to answer. I will stop sharing.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you, Clerk Segrist. Our next presenter is Treasurer Slavens.
Hello, and I don't have a PowerPoint. I had, I had put some things in the, in the binder though, kind of explaining both the treasurer's office and water billing. I'm basically, I collect the money and I disperse the money. I have a deputy Bruce who assists me in everything when I'm not here. He's here for purchase orders or whatever needs to be done. If I were, something were to happen to me, he would take over as treasurer. I'm not really sure, you know, basically we, you know, mail out the summer taxes, July 1, winter taxes, December 1. They have till the 14th of September for summer to pay and winter, February 14. You know, with COVID, things have changed a little bit. We are, my office is very active with residents coming in to pay, whether it's their water bill or their taxes. And since COVID, we, you know, are closed. So we do have many ways people can pay. They can pay online. I started IVR, which people can pay over the phone. That's something I, I started because a lot of people want to pay over the phone. And so I started that. They can drop it in the Dropbox, they can mail it. And then we also have started auto pay, which someone can sign up for their taxes or, or water bill with a voided check. And then we will withdraw the monies on the due date of the taxes or the water bills. I really don't have anything much more to say. I know we've had a long day. So do you guys have any questions on anything?
You know, Diane is also, I mean, she's got a lot of public interface, definitely like the clerk's office and like leisure services. And I know that people have, you guys handle a lot of phone calls. If I've been in that office, there's a lot of calls continually coming in.
Yeah. Yeah, especially, yeah, especially when people get their water bill. They are always questioning, which is fine. And then same with taxes. People don't realize, especially a new homeowner. They look at the taxes from the prior homeowner. And because of proposal A, things have changed. So the, the cap gets uncapped and their taxes go up. And so we're always reeducating our community, our residents on, you know, why their taxes have gone up.
That's a big one. Maybe we, you know, look, do even study session on that for people to understand the details. Because, yeah, I, we get that a lot. Like you said, people say, why am I paying this and my neighbor's paying this? And they don't realize why. Any questions, Stephen?
Hey Diane, are we 100% deployed now with the wireless meters?
Well, we, I'm not quite sure what you mean by wireless meters. You know, the, the little, yes, we, we are. They're MXUs is what they're called. But they're, so the guys can go out and.
They can read it from the street kind of thing, right?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
They get bad after a while. And so once they stop working, they have to put a new one in. I think there's about a 10-year life for them.
Okay.
So.
And then you've made a lot of beneficial changes in your first term. Is there anything specific that you're targeting to change?
Now.
Yeah.
Well, one kind of exciting thing that's going to happen, I believe, next year is we're going to have a ping tower. So instead of the guys having to drive around to get the meters read, we'll be able to write in our office, be able to get all of the water meters read. And the nice thing about that is when somebody moves out or you get a new renter in, we always have to do a final read. So we always have to set up appointments for DPW to go out and get a meter read on somebody. This way we can just do it real time. Or if somebody's having a leak issue, we can check their, their read right away instead of, you know, having the guys go out there. So that, that's something exciting that will be.
Oh, yeah.
I believe next year, yeah.
That'll be beneficial for homeowners.
Definitely, definitely.
And like you say, you do have a study session coming up in the month of April to talk about water usage. And that'd be even a good time to talk about, you know, how gee, we, sorry, my daughter's back.
Yeah. And one thing, you know, we didn't change the water rates this year because of COVID. I know Wendy and Jade, you know, usually, or Tim before, would do a study session on the water rates. And this year, they said that there really was very little change. So we just kept the rates the same because residents like to, to come to the town, to the study session to hear, you know, what's going on with the water rate. So this, this past year, they did stay the same.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so that's going to be exciting too. And even talking about how the different regional water things that we belong to and the water has changed with that. Kate?
You did. You're muted.
Yeah, my, for some reason it didn't want to unmute right away. Not really a question, but just if you could send along a compliment to Bruce. My husband recently signed up for the auto drafting of our property taxes. First time that we've actually had to pay them ourselves instead of through our mortgage company. And so we sent in the form and got an email back from Bruce that was very informative, but also very nice and professional. And so my husband was very pleased, so to give a compliment to him. Thank you.
Yeah, that's one thing we do is email, you know, the ones who have signed up for the auto draft. We email them just to remind them because if you have, you know, $2,000, $3,000 coming out of your checking account to pay your taxes, you want to make sure you have that money in there. So I will let him know. Thanks.
Great. Any other questions? No, good. Well, a couple of things. Thanks, everyone, for calling in. What we're going to do now is we're going to have a board picture on Zoom that Kristin Thomas wants. But I just want to mention a couple of things. So they're pretty, in March, the Canton, state of Canton will be coming out. Usually it's an in-person event with the chamber where everybody goes and meets. And then they talk about, you know, they watch a video on the Canton. And what this theme is going to be concentrating on how we survived during COVID. I mean, what Canton did during 2020 to change things up. And it's going to go department by department and talk about, you know, what everybody did to go over and above. Another item we're doing with a cross-business reach out is, you know, because we know some of the businesses are struggling, our, some of our departments are pulling together a list of the different departments and the different businesses out there that may not be reached through the DDA or the chamber. So that as we know that when the Biden administration comes in, we're going to be seeing a lot of grants and loans, hopefully to help keep our businesses afloat. And this list we're creating is going to help us start shooting that information out quickly. So we hope we save some of the businesses. We haven't seen many go under in Canton. We know some are on the edge. So hopefully, you know, they can hang on a little bit longer until we, we get there together. But does anyone have any questions? Okay, so we ask, thank you, everybody for presenting. Board members, please stay on. Tanya?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So you are, you are having all these listening sessions or, you know, conversations with businesses. Like, is there an opportunity for the trustees to sometimes participate in those, like?
Uh, yeah, we haven't, oh, you mean in terms of what Kristen was speaking of earlier with the MEDC? Talking to businesses?
Yeah, sometimes. And then, you know, there are other sessions that Director Honberger was talking about. Or no, not Director Honberger, or some, one of the other directors is talking about having conversations within the community, listening sessions. And maybe we can like take part in those.
Sure, sure. As they come up, I'll make sure everybody knows about them. And also when we go to the HOAs, you know, that anybody who wants to come can come along. And also some of the meetings, you know, with SEMCOG or CWW. If you want to be involved and listen, I can make sure that I send those meeting notices to you. And also if you want to come, they can, you know, they would list you as a board member.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So if the directors or if you do not have any questions for the board or any other statements, we will ask you to please log off so we can get a picture here. But thank you, everyone, for coming. I appreciate it. It was a long day.
Yeah, everybody, we are ready for the photo.
Everybody, wait, put your lipstick on, brush your hair.
Yeah.
Got to duck down. Okay.
Want to do it if you want to smile now?
Are you, are you doing a screenshot? Is that how you're doing it?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
Want to do it too? By all means, we could have seven different screenshots.
We'll find the best one.
All right, so how about this on the count of, when we get to one, I'll start with three to one. Ready? Okay. Three, two, one. What it looks like. Oh, no. Okay, we'll try one more. Do it naturally? Or should we smile?
Yeah.
We could be like the Brady Bunch. We could be like the Brady Bunch.
All right, we'll try one more time. At the count of three, one, wait, no, three to, three to one, three, two, one. All right, let's take a look. Okay, here we go. That one is substantially better than the first one.
Okay, substantially? Do you want us, you want to close up this time or far?
And this looks great. I think this one looks good. I will, do you want to do a couple of them or no?
What are we doing with the photo?
So, oh, did we not go over the purpose?
No.
I just knew that for some reason it was going in the focus, but I was, I didn't know why.
We, she does. And we got a call on the, the board picture that we had in the focus. So we had a complaint saying that they wanted to see us. You know, they wanted to see us a little bit more than just a little tiny row.
It was small. I noticed that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
And another, you also, let me know also, so different versions of the focus as we go on. If you guys want to put an article in, you can have your own column. So, you know, summer's coming up on one. So if you just let me know, Diane has hers and you have a topic you want to discuss. You can write up a little.
Emery, do you want your headset on?
Oh, that's true.
Me, it makes it look real.
And, well, any, and Diane, Diane, you're kind of low in the square. I don't know if you can tilt it.
Okay, we're going to do another one? I took a couple of screenshots without telling anybody, so. I got a couple of things to work with, but I'm just going to send it all to Kristin anyway. Okay. Three, two, one. Okay.
Did you take that?
Okay.
Oh, you took it off.
That works. All right, she's got three to look at. You know, if there's like, she could also like use Photoshop if, you know, looks if you're like weird and one and good.
Yeah, she can cut and paste squares.
Yeah, I mean, this guy be the easiest Photoshop job in the world.
It does. It's true. It is easy. We can put someone else's face on it if we want. I might go with that.
All right, should we close this open?
Yes. All right. Guys.
All right. Have a good weekend.
Should we, should we adjourn, should I move to close the meeting?
Yeah.
Move to close the meeting, please.
And supervisor, I move to close the meeting.
Support.
Support. Thanks. Please take roll call.
Okay, Borninski.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly. Diane, you're on mute.
She's frozen.
Oh, she's frozen.
She's frozen.
Yeah.
All right, Graham Hudek.
Hi, yes.
Slavens.
Hi.
Segrist eyes, Snyderman?
Um, great meeting, Anne Marie, well put together and I.
Ganguly? She's not, she's not tied into the, I mean, if I can get her to vote, it'll make my minutes a lot easier.
Tanya vote.
Oh, wow. Well, she's, she's logging in. She hasn't connected to the, to the wifi yet. There, but it's not.
Stephen was done with us. He's gone.
A long day. All right, we've. All right, we've got a quorum and we're out of, we voted in motion pass, right, ma'am supervisor? So we should probably have this meeting.
Yes, I think so.